Barbara Reyes, Jean Rodriguez, Michael Russo, Erica Seitzman, James Sanford. It's time for my report. I'd like to report that the 311 community group drop-ins are for youth has been doing very well.
Excuse me, Director. Just wanted to clarify a discussion that I just had with counsel. On the advice of counsel, I'd like to make a motion to discuss the chair's illegal business. We discussed new business. I don't think there needs to be a motion. I think it can just be.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So it's been very successful so far. We are working on a proposal that they're going to be submitting to us.
Have a nice night.
See you, sir.
We hope to move forward with that proposal so this nonprofit can take over full operation of that drop-in center. I completed my round of quarterly meet and greets with meetings at Adams and Monroe this month. Attendance has been strong, but it seems like forever it don't have. It's been a few weeks ago, right? We have advertised for following open positions. Public relations and policy specialists, if you remember Corinne, who sent her regards to everybody. Our development director position and an accounting clerk position. So if you know folks that are qualified, please forward them over to us. Hoboken Housing Forward update. On the redevelopment front, the city is proceeding with our Part 58 environmental review. The contractor consultant is working, and we're having periodic meetings with that consultant. The RFP for Development Partners was published on June 10th and sent to all of the previously approved developers. The responses are due back July 17th. I will be inviting participants to our selection committee in the coming week with an initial meeting plan for the week of July 22nd. That's exciting. That's a big step. Can't wait. We are continuing regular meetings with the Enterprise HUD HAG team. Again, Enterprise and the Enterprise Partners and HUD are part of that team that are constantly talking about our redevelopment project and moving that project ahead as fast as we possibly can. We're going through all of the HUD HOs and making sure all the i's are dotted and the t's are jacked. Our contract is part of that for future capital needs, which is a requirement for the HUD.
I'm going to ask that any conversations be held outside of the audience. Thank you.
Is in process, the capital needs study. They've been working with us closely, and we expect to have a final draft of their report shortly. The Enterprise team and staff are beginning our work on projecting our management needs and positioning in 2025 and beyond. A typo there. This will include our next steps in getting ready for our future. I should mention that on the evaluation team, I did put out an erroneous part of our policy earlier on an email to you. The correct one is in your book now. So there was a mistake. It was a February policy approval that got overridden by a November policy approval. I sent out the February one. Sorry about that. Not major changes, but significant enough that I sent it back out. So we'll be working off of that. The project-based voucher programs. We have received response on both VAS and signal room occupancy. Michael's been very involved with that as well. We've sent a letter to both proposers concerning some additional needed information and prepared a detailed letter for them. With legal counsel, once those issues are addressed, the proposal will be brought back to the committee and then the board. So we're going to push that as fast as we can. Security issues. We are going to be rebidding our security services contract soon. So some of the concerns that were there tonight, we're going to be rebidding that in the very near future. And we are working on beefing up that specification so we have a little better response during the next year. Just again, mention meeting with me. Come on down, email, text. Drop off a request for an intake with me at our main office. I continually meet with residents that want to meet with me. So please feel free to come down and drop those off. Housing for Hoboken will be meeting on January 16th.
January?
January. Thank you. July 16th. The meeting was delayed for scheduling conflicts, but we're looking forward to that. We have, I think, today published an invitation for submission of applications for community members that want to be a part of the Housing for Hoboken Board. And I believe we have some of those here with us tonight. So we'll have those distributed widely. We are giving a month for folks to put in their applications to us to be on the Housing for Hoboken Board as a leading other group. Come on in and put in your applications. Special capital projects, we have a lot going on. The defensible space fencing is in the permitting process. This is again from behind our buildings at Andrew Jackson that will separate areas from each other to stop pass-through traffic. We approved it at last month's meeting. And it's in. The contract has been signed, and we're permitting it. The Harrison Courtyard project has been rebid, and we expect to have the project to the August board. We are replacing the ramp in the back of Jackson, the back of Harrison. This is required a ramp in the front. It's the one that Adrian mentioned earlier. That gives access to the building while the back ramp is being repaired. And until that back ramp is repaired, that front ramp will stay there. The Adams Garden generator replacement is complete, but we are just waiting for PSE and G. They've disappeared on us to increase the gas pressure for the emergency generators. We continue to call them and say, get to us, and let's get that done. It's PSE and G issue. The work on the Monroe boiler replacement is essentially done. Permits have been obtained, and the installation is waiting for a final part by the contractor. We'll definitely have that up and running for Monroe by the wintertime. As part of the special allocation of capital fund that we applied for in fact, the security camera installation on each floor is in process at Harrison. The hallway and stairwell refurbishment, the notice of receipt has been given. There is some interplay between those two contracts because we want to have all of the lines for the cameras run before we do the stairwell refurbishment. So they're working together between the two contractors. The exterior door replacements that I think were mentioned earlier, we expect to have this to the board in August. The architects and engineers have finally given me a spec that I like. So we're going ahead with bidding on that project. We've been working with the city of Hoboken on the renovations additions to the Mama Johnson Field, a scorekeeper box behind Hoboken Plate, renovations at our postal building that will include permanent restrooms rather than those porta-potties. So we're working with them now. What's going to pay for that is this coming year's CDBG funding. So that doesn't come in till September. So although we've been working, we're meeting, getting ready, we have to wait for that funding to come in. And it's the same with the next items. The security upgrades to include gate at the horseshoes, lighting, playground resurfacing, and rodent-resistant trash receptacles. We just had another meeting this week. I'm really excited about the trash receptacles. I think it's going to be our next major step in controlling our rodent population at our main campus. They're just have too many food sources. So we'll work with the residents as we get those new trash receptacles. Again, being funded in September. So there's going to have to be a bidding process. There's going to have to be all that. So November, December actually probably, I'd say, get them. But I think this is going to significantly help us to get rid of the rodent population. They're nice. You're going to like them when they come in. They've got trash, recycles, and composting bins with them. So it's really going to be a great system. Management report. Of course, we have major concerns with an audit finding that you'll see as we go through the audit tonight. It has been a recurring finding. We discussed this at length in the finance procurement meeting this past Monday. Over the past 18 months, staff has focused on sending our management staff to trainings, including the pending HATMA regulations. However, this has proven not to be quite enough and not on time. So Frank and I anticipated some problems, and so far, we've taken the following action. We have set up a quality assurance function in management, assigning our best file compliance manager to review all the files as they come in through recertifications. And the next thing we're going to do, and just to say as part of our training this past year, we brought in a national company that's an expert in files for public housing. They did training with our staff. And again, it just doesn't seem to have been enough. We're frustrated. So my proposal to you, which I'll have back to you, is to bring one of those national companies in, and there's two or three of them, to actually perform our file updates. We need to do this in order to get our files back in shape. We are going to be getting proposals from those companies and coming back to you for approval on those. As discussed in the committee meeting last Monday, we are also going to be asking our auditing firm to come back for an interim review of our files in October, November, before an audit to evaluate our progress. So we're going to hit that very, very hard this year. And my goal is to have the management findings cleared up by the next audit cycle. So that was a big discussion during our finance committee. Anything want to be added? The finance numbers? No? Yeah?
What's the nature of the audit finding?
That our files are not complete, and they're not in order. And by the way, we're going to have our auditor here. He's not here now. Is he in the back of me? Okay. So he's going to be able to present when we get to the audit.
If you turn, Commissioner, if you turn to tab four, the end of the audit, pages, the last few pages, it lays out page 55 and page 56. 55 and 56 describes the audit findings and describes in a little less detail what the director just said.
Thank you. I have read the audit. And I'm also aware that an email was sent earlier today regarding corrected audit. Is that the audit before us, or is it a different document?
Yes, it is the audit before you.
So the corrected audit document was sent in that email? And that document is reflected here on the agenda table?
Corrected. Just to be super sure, that document, Lordus? Was that bound copy?
It's not here.
Excuse me, we can't hit it back here.
But I believe that was updated. And we actually just received bound copy that distributed as well. What was the nature of the correction? What was deficient in the first document versus this now newly bound document?
I might ask Commissioner Edwards to address that. There are some dispellings, and there are some mistakes.
They were all incredibly minor.
I'm sorry, incredibly minor?
Minor. If you go to page eight, at one point, it said, instead of the city of Hoboken, it said the borough of Pitside Park. And then there were three other typefaces.
So the audit finding errors in the way we do things at this housing authority was in itself? Like a party base?
No, no, no. Back up. When the audit came out in the draft version, it included the pages, all of these pages that are in front of you. Between the original, between the draft presented at the Monday maintenance committee meeting and what you have today, the only changes are three typos and a reference to the borough of Pitside Park versus Hoboken in the audit that's covered up. The items on page 55 and 56, as the director just said, were exactly as written in the draft as are in front of you now and were discussed at one of that meetings.
So you were saying that the changes were not material findings. They were dispellations?
Correct. But I wanted to make sure, we wanted to make sure that they didn't say the borough of Pitside Park is the audit of the city of Housing Authority Hoboken.
Director, is that the case?
Yes, very minor changes.
Counsel, is that the case? I'm not aware of this. I'll ask the auditor this evening.
So HUD has delayed the implementation of their new computer system and the HATMA changes. We've been working really hard and getting ready for it. And they just sent us a notice saying, never mind for now. We'll be back to you when we do the changes. So although we've put in a lot of work, there's going to be, we've done presentations to the resident boards. We've gone through it and through it. And now they said, oh, wait a minute. We're not ready yet. So, okay. We'll put that on hold for now. And I cannot overemphasize how much extra work this has been for Frank and his staff on getting ready for this line up. I do remind folks to call us if there's any illegal vehicles that are parked. Attachment two is a snapshot of our management reports, and I'll hand it over to Mr. Merchant to go through his reports.
Do you hear anybody? Stand version. N D R C H A N D.
Yes, so there is a snapshot. And then also in the back of your book, you should have the graph, which is the six-month graph. I continue to say thank you to Mr. Vestado because that is helpful. It was a good addition to the report. So thank you. In our snapshot for this month, for July. Last month, if you remember, there was a little bit of a change in the rent collection. There was a little bit of a spike in the amount of families that had not paid rent. It was unusual, but like we mentioned before, usually in December and around May or June because of graduations and a little turn. But that corrected itself this month. So we did collect a little bit more rent. It was the first time accounts receivable not only didn't go up, but it went down by 120% compared to last month. As far as our occupancy, we had some losses unfortunately in the senior buildings. You know, heart goes out to the families of Harris Park. And I always say this to the managers, you know, in our senior buildings. We love you guys, and it's tough because sometimes unfortunately is where our attrition happens. In general, I know that managers have been going out and doing inspections. This is a very hard job that managers do day in and day out. And I know that there are things that happen along the way. And I want to make sure that everybody understands that while there can be and there are findings right now in our files, right? If you go to any town USA, to any housing authority where you have a manager, those managers there don't have to deal with what our managers have to deal with on a daily basis. They don't have to walk into apartments, but maybe they find something that's so uncomfortable that I can't even believe they come back to work the next day. They don't have to deal with what we have to deal with in the main office where we get yelled at and we're worried that someone's going to attack us for doing our job, right? So what I want to say is that the managers that are here show up every day. And maybe we need a little help in certain aspects of what we do. But I want to stand behind the managers and say that I thank them for the way that we put themselves in harm's way. Sometimes even when we're trying to help someone, who doesn't see we're trying to help them, right? But that is our job. That's what we've chosen. And I will continue to show up. And I thank the managers that continue to do that alongside of us because this is not an easy thing to do. And we do do it for you, for the residents. I hope one day you guys will see that everything that we do is to make your life better. We are not doing this to pick on people. Every step that we have to do to make everything that we make better is hard. It's hard to fix. You know, it's years of things that people have been doing certain ways. And yes, the bug stops with me. I'm the director of management. The vows are wrong. It's my fault, right? So at this point, what I'd like to say is that we have been seeing this coming. And there are things that we can do, and there is a solution. And I thank the board for understanding and working with us and the solutions to get out of this. But I just wanted to put that on the record that when you look at this audit report, it doesn't talk about what we have to face with every day when we're at housing authorities. So please just keep that in mind. Other than that, our average specs to this month got a little bit better. So our average in rent collections is 39%. This month, it was 34%. It helped us because it's been in the 40s. Nationally, that number is the national number. Housing authorities across the country are struggling with this. It's not just housing authorities. Private landlords are struggling too. Due to COVID, there was an increase of not paying the rent across the country. We were affected like every other housing authority has been affected. We continue to try to work with families. We continue to try to work through the court system. As these things work themselves out, we will get better. And we're headed in that direction. Our vacancy has to show to you guys the promise that we are doing what it takes to get there. Thank you, everybody. And again, thank you to the managers that show up.
Thank you. Good chat. Good chat. And again, I would like to emphasize, because some numbers sometimes look terrible. And but it is a national problem. HUD has gone so far as to put out their notice saying that housing authorities will not be penalized because of their tenant's account receivables and uncollected rent because it is truly a national problem that came through COVID. People just did not pay their rent, and they did not put the money aside. Many folks were told not to pay their rent. And unfortunately, we have many, many people that are in that situation. And we always have a choice, right? We could have gone in and just evicted everybody that owed us any money. But instead, we decided to work with the families to enter into repayment agreement. The people are paying us small amounts every month. We can extend it out over 10 years. And we believe that that is the right thing to do. That is the moral thing to do. And so we are working with our families. Now, if you enter into a repayment agreement and you don't follow that agreement and tell us to go away, we're going to have to take the next steps. We don't want to do that. If you don't come in and you owe us a bunch of money and you just don't come in even, then we're going to have to take the next steps. But we are dedicated, and I've told the staff, we are absolutely dedicated that we do not wish to evict any tenant at any time. That is not something we wish to do. I firmly believe that if somebody does go toward a court action, I want to know asleep at night that we have done everything we possibly can to help that resident. I believe we have done that. It's going to take a little more time. But again, it's not just the Hoboken Housing Authority's issue. This is a national issue bouncing off of COVID. And it's going to take some time for everyone to get right on this. So I want to, again, thank the managers for working so hard.
Could I add one thing to that, Director?
You may.
This just came across my inbox very late today. So I don't know. I apologize. I don't know a ton of details about it. But to underscore your point, HUD issued a press release today saying that they're making $40 million available nationwide to qualified nonprofits and other governmental entities specifically for rental assistance for low-income households. I don't know if that will eventually have any benefit to housing authority residents. But obviously, that underscores the idea that this is a national issue. And hopefully, the authority and its residents will find some way to be able to take advantage of that.
Thank you, Counselor. We'll go at it with our partners. We are planning a change in our work order system that's coming to you in six days. That you will have one number to call for work orders. All of our sites, all of our properties, one number. So you will no longer have to go through the manager. You will have one number to call in for work orders. You're all getting, if you haven't already, you're getting the flyers and the fridge magnets with that number on it. So you'll be getting, if you don't have it already, we'll be getting it over the next week. And that should simplify the process for you. Attachment five is our extermination report. Just a whole bunch of them. Attachment six is our monthly elevator report. Special notes on elevators. It breaks my heart to say it, but 321 Harrison will be down for the week. They have to do major repairs for safety reasons on the motor and the system mechanisms. So they will have, we will have to have that elevator down for the whole week. It's not great timing. It's too hot. But if we don't do it, we will be risking lives. So we need to help each other. Please call us with anyone that has an issue. If we already have maintenance guys that are carrying things up for people, please help your neighbors and family help you. We know it's difficult. But believe us, there is no choice. We have to have that elevator reconditioned. The 310 Marshall elevator was down with an expected repair tomorrow. So we're confident that'll be back up. A couple others went up recently. On our contractor reports, very simple. We only have one contract for extraordinary maintenance. We continue to accept applications for part-time building maintenance workers. They come and go. Please call in your manager's office with specific cleaning or repair needs. Our boiler crew is working on their final shutdowns and getting our systems ready to keep you nice and toasty when October comes. So they're out there working, getting those systems ready. We did really well last quarter, and we expect to replicate that and be even better this next year. Finance is working on a revision to the board reporting systems as requested by the finance committee. I think we've been working hard with the finance committee, and I think we've come a little ways. So I appreciate that committee and Dave's hard work on that. So we'll put in some time on that. We're still just waiting on the Housing Finance Agency to close out our special grant with them. I know you've heard this over and over. We're just waiting on them to give us the final paperwork. It's not hurting us because it's a forgivable loan. And in the winter, I think, if I remember right, March, April, that loan will be completely forgiven. Done. In five years, 20% forgivable. So it's just, and I think that's what's going to happen is they're going to go, oh, we're done. Here's the final paperwork. But we're in pretty shape on that. Year-end closing for the audit is before you tonight. We've already discussed that somewhat. Contract management and publication of RFP and RFUs is coming out of the finance department. Resident Services, Mr. Daniel couldn't be with us tonight, but he does have his report. I would like to give at least one highlight is that on August 10th, there will be a basketball tournament in Honor of Nuna on our site. We're working with that group to make sure we have the same signature about it. And I believe that's the end of our.
Director, I'd also like to add under the Resident Services that July 25th, the Black Law and Course Lit servicing the community has partnered with GOYA, and they will be having a distribution in Harrison Gardens between 3 and 7 P M.
Thank you. Is that conclusion important? Is there's any questions?
I have questions, Director. Does anyone else have questions? So earlier, you had made mention of the legally parked vehicles. And that residents should alert you to illegally parked vehicles. What is that process?
What is that process? Can you describe that process for the moment?
Sure. Residents can either call their manager, they can call Frank, or they can call me at any time. And believe me, I get calls at one in the morning. And we will call the towing company, and they will come out and tow the vehicle. Anything you wanna add to that, Frank?
There are some families who have reserved spots, number one, as one example. So families...
Yeah, there's something being met.
So families that have reserved spots, we've given authorization to the tow company to, if the person, everyone who has a reserved spot, the license plate matches the sign and the spot. So we extended the courtesy to those people that they can call and have that car removed. That's one type of legal car.
So if a resident with a reserved spot...
Someone is in their spot.
And someone is in their spot.
They can call directly and have it towed. Or call it.
And it's just instantly a phone call, or do you look into a person?
Well, if the person has the plate, then there is no looking into it, right?
So you go off, the resident says, so and so's plate is in my spot, and then you call the towing company right away?
Correct. So it's basically the person has to be driving the car, then their license plate is on the sign. So it's their spot. So that's an easy...
The towing company checks that, where they give that?
Yeah, that's it.
The towing company checks whether that parking space is occupied by a resident or a reserved resident?
Right, they just look at the plate.
Could it be another resident?
No, no.
Goes into that slot?
No, no, no. The reserved spots are for that person. It'll be your spot, for example. So that's one type.
I think what Commissioner Sanford is trying to say is that sometimes you have non-residents who don't realize that it's a reserved spot, and they won't park in this spot. So when the individual comes home, they can park in their spot. So at that point, they will then call.
They could call me or call the...
That is not what I'm saying, but it is a good point. It's not what I'm saying.
Let me keep going, because I was a couple of seconds...
I was saying that the chair was making a good point, but that was not the point that I was getting to. So I wanna get back to what happens when there's a legal parking spot. So none of the staff, you, the director, the executive director, you don't look into whether the spot is legitimately parked by a resident of the housing authority?
No, it's the resident's call.
If a resident of a housing authority parks in a spot that is already reserved for residents to park in on the housing authority, they may not realize it's for a specific resident. Does that make sense?
There's a huge yellow on the floor that says reserved, huge. And then there's a sign on top that says reserved. It's kinda like when you see a handicap spot, you see it.
Right, but do any of the residents think it's reserved for residents of the housing authority, and that those residents are... Any resident, any resident, any resident, this person is a specific resident?
So the people who have been getting towed from those spots are usually people visiting.
Right.
So that answers that question. So it hasn't been someone that was a resident that was towed from another resident's spot.
Right, but if it was one of our residents that accidentally did that to a spot that didn't belong to them, what would we do?
I would like to add that on the side is the license plate.
The license plate, right.
For the person that has that spot. So when you call in, you look at that sign that says this spot is reserved for license plate number J77256. So you know what's happening.
If you're not driving that car, you're not...
Well, that's something, that's what, again, if you're average resident, you might not know that. They might just see, they do, all the residents know that. All the known, all the residents.
I think it's more likely than not.
So...
And then there's another type, the yellow lights. Yeah, yellow lights. So that's clearly visible for anybody. If someone sees a car on the yellow line, and it's usually someone who's been towed from the yellow line, who then becomes the yellow line enforcer. So whenever they see someone parking on the yellow, they call to say, you told me there's somebody on the yellow now. That's another type. And then the last amount is the one that I think causes the most parking to be there is whether a car is registered or not. So then that's really the spot that people are complaining the most about, because they're saying there's nowhere to park, they're driving around. And then they wanna know, well, is that car registered? That, to your point, we would never tow that car in the middle of the night if I did not have a way to confirm that that car was registered or not. All the cars that are registered have a sticker that's visible. And the tow company has instructions that they cannot tow the car if they see that sticker. So even if someone calls them or whatever, they still have to double-check again to make sure the sticker is not there. Where we've had some issues with tenants that were upset is they had the old registration, and they thought they were registered, and then, so they never got the new registration, right? So that's been something. But for most people, we went, we were hearing the board from months at a time. We sent nixos and emails and things, right? We did get to the point that we had to say, we've informed everybody, right?
So in that third category, that third bucket, how, what's the solution? How do we determine that, and how is it determined?
So then usually for those...
What's the expression on?
Yeah, someone will call me, and what we'll do is we'll take a look at the cameras. We'll try to see if we see the car. We'll look to see if the car is registered. And then we'll keep an eye on that car. And then if we can see it again, or that car's still there and it's not registered, we'll tow it. That makes more. So if I get a call late at night and say, listen, oh, I've been driving around for an hour, there's three cars that I don't think, they'll send me the picture. And then first thing in the morning, we'll take a look at it. Because I'm not gonna tow that car unless I can be certain that it's not registered.
Is that part of parking policy, do you just follow the parking policy?
Are parking policies that you have to be registered if you're towed?
And there are no exceptions? You don't make any exceptions?
If you give an example, I mean, I...
I don't know.
You're right, right. The red light is the red light. Are there exceptions for the red light? I don't know. You can take the red light if you, I guess, if you do it to the emergency. I don't know if there has been exceptions. We did one that the board approved for someone who was towed who had no sticker because that time, that's the only exception. You guys asked us to make an exception.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner, am I correct in saying, because I remember when we met with the security committee, officers are also, the local police department is now also authorized to tow from the yellow line. Am I correct?
On our property, they would contact us. No, it's, we do the tow. If it's on city property, they do the tow.
I think as an aside, I'm sorry, I'm not sure. As an aside, I think we should probably have a conversation about potentially doing something with a system, a license plate recognition system. It's been working really well with cities.
This is definitely coming from the property. And it just blew off in the first year that we had them. So if we get tied to what we're gonna have, we already have the cameras in place. Because part of the problem is that the city, when the city goes driving around about the tow, they can look at that plate and see who they are. We can't do that. I can't know if it's my resident or the car is... That'd be awesome. If there was a way that we could tie that in, at least it'd give people the...
It's a conversation. I mean, I don't know if there is, but I think it's a conversation we'll have. Because we have the tech now. The cameras are just installed on the last...
Once they're there.
That's the easy part. And it's gonna help us when people drive through the gate or we find somebody that's done something that we'll be able to identify. And then our step now is report that to the police, make that take action. Although if we find they're registered to us in one of our units, we can take action against the police.
What action would we take against the police?
Well, if they say drove through our gates one night and just broke the gates. So, you know, we would be looking probably toward, well, certainly talk to a legal counsel to see if that particular thing rose to a notice to quit eviction action, or whether it was a notice to cease. And we will be then also working on the amount of cost us to be reimbursed from that.
Okay, thank you. Do you guys have any more questions?
Yes, one last thing. There are things in the department. What we did talk to a lot more, we've been working towards is assigned spots for everyone who has registered. The lines have been laid on the ground. So now all the way to, a little bit of the border, I don't understand, we're working with the last ramp, but it's in the pipeline already. Once that happens, we have about three hundred and twenty registered vehicles right now. Everyone will say that a registered property is gonna have their spot. And I think that's the best news yet. Then they will be able to then call anybody who has their spot. But I think that's gonna be the best improvement, quality of life change. That they'll go just feel the needed, that we can go out and track them.
Thank you, Blake. Kinda moving on to the set questions based on the report. So I wanna bring it back to the vacancies and the delinquencies.
The delinquencies?
Vacancies and delinquencies. So this is a subject that we've been grappling with for a very long time. And I know several commissioners have asked about why. What, so are the, how much, how many of the, is these first month delinquencies, are they new or are they pre-keeved persons that have failed?
Yeah, that's actually in the snapshot. So one, those people that use the one month or less, those are more. And the ones who are more than one month, those are the ones that contain minimum expenses.
I'm sorry, the little ones that can...
The, in the snapshot, there's a number, there's a figure that says less than one month or more than one month. So the new ones are all, the new ones are less than a month. It's like a brain meter. Now, I don't know if out of those, if they've been repeated. They could have been a one month, two months ago. I don't have that. But what that, what that report is meant to show you is that... So let me give you the actual figure of this one, right?
Thank you.
So here on the snapshot, on the July snapshot, if you see one month or less, it says for this month, two oh eight. So two hundred and eight families, only all one month. Out of those, it's hard to say if they just became the one month, or maybe they had two months last month, they pinned one month down, now they're one month. But for the most part, those one-month families just became late. And that's why it's broken out that way by the system, just so that you see. So over a month, there is two hundred and nine families. Those are the families that they've been, they've been late for some time. Within those two hundred and eighty-nine families is all the families that are going to court with, that are in the queue. So, but I think you have other questions.
Yeah, no, please continue. What I would like is, as soon as possible, succinct as possible, how does, how do we get from persons simply missed payment, delinquent on one month's rent, to when it becomes the council's issue and there are notices sent and eviction process begins?
So families who are late ten dollars for one month get the same exact two-minute letter that someone who's been late for two years. You get that letter that says, hey, you are thirty days late, you owe some amount of money, and now you're sending a notice. Because we have such a large amount of families who are outstanding, and because it's in our best interest to prioritize the ones with the bigger balances, that's why we, as we started to select families for court, went for the higher numbers first. So as we're going through, it's very tough to tell you who of these people waiting was the first time. But the notices that they get are the same, whether it's the first time you're thirty days or you're, you know, you've been getting that thirty-day notice for three years now. But the process is the same. Once you are late on your rent, you're gonna start getting your notices to quit. Technically, if, let's say, all we had was ten families that owed us money, and only ten families received a notice to quit, and all ten families we got court dates for, we would stop receiving rent for those ten families until we went to court.
How do we explain that to residents? So for example, the resident gets a notice and it's just for ten dollars? Versus they, you know, it's still a relatively tight knit community, and they know that somebody has been getting these notices for three years?
No, that is, that is the, now that we're fighting, right? That families have died.
How do we avoid communicating that it's not favoritism that's allowing that person to stay there for two years?
That's a hard, that's a hard point. But I guess we can, we can make a, we can make a press release type where it could be coming from the housing authority saying that, you know...
So at what point, let's, you know, there's, we're talking about inspection, right? So the guy who's down ten dollars didn't pay us, we're not evicting them right away, right? So at what point do you go down the road where counsel is involved and the eviction process begins?
Well, don't you first try to... Always.
Yes, I was getting...
Always, yeah. Always, we get, the first thing that we want. The point is that when you get that letter that says contact your manager for that first time, right? If you contact your manager, we will then start processing offering those even more reasons. You would be surprised. So what are we talking about here? A total of, what? Four hundred something families get notices, but they don't call us. They get that letter that says, we're evicting you, and they don't even call to see if it's true. That's, that's a sad state of affairs. If I received a letter that said that, I would immediately call that number and find out what's happening, or what can I do, right? So we have gotten past that point. And that's my point, is it was a national issue. And to your point, people are seeing, monkey see, monkey do. Someone is not paying and getting away with it, you know? And that's, unfortunately, we tend to do that in life. And we see...
Sorry, we're starting a notice monthly?
Monthly.
So go down monthly, and while we... I remember having this conversation with the former commissioner, Solomon, who was asking how, like literally going to the door and putting the notice under the door and putting it, or notice on the door, or whatever it is. And I wouldn't expect that monthly, of course, but are we spot doing that, maybe once a quarter, or...
What we're doing that is for the ones that we officially go to court for. So because it is a dollar amount then, certified notice at the time of, even more that, is a dollar amount. So what we're doing is that we're making sure that the ones who have the high dollar amounts, the ones that we will be doing court, the doors get sent certified and letter and hand delivered. As we're working through those numbers, eventually we'll get to those other folks, and they'll have that. But, um, but yeah.
Yeah, and part of the, pardon me. Part of the reason for that, the notice that we're referring to is commonly called a thirty-day notice. That is a code requirement that you have to give residents at least thirty days' notice if their lease could be terminated based on not paying the rent. So that's why it's done on a monthly basis. So the housing authority, as it is going through this process, so filing complaints starting with the highest dollar amount, those notices have gone out to everybody. And the reason why it's sent certified right before it essentially turns into a court case is so that we can't show up in court. And somebody says, oh, well, I never got that notice. Well, if you sent it regular and certified mail, that essentially is what you could use in court to say, well, you can say you never received it, but if we got back something saying you signed for the certified, you received it. Or if we got back the certified, but we did not get back the regular mail as under deliverable, under the statute, that's confirmation of receipt. Whether or not you opened it, that's not the authority issue. So that is, it's essentially to build the case for court. And as Frank mentioned, if you did that, and I know Commissioner said something about for, you, Commissioner said something about sliding it under the door, that's a different topic. I'll leave that manpower question up to the authority. But if you were to do it certified every month, you're talking about over an eight-dollar charge for every one of these every month. So at that point, it become, right, at that point, it becomes a cost-benefit issue for the authority on whether it's for them to do it for everybody or only those cases where you really are going to be in court very soon. And in terms of the court cases, I know last month I did say that my hope was that I would be able to tell you that we have assigned court dates. When we showed today, we do not yet have assigned court dates, but I was in court today and asked again. And I was told that essentially it's just a matter of things being a little bit slower because of the holiday. And within the next week or so, we should have assigned court dates for the thirty...
Thirty-eight or thirty-seven?
Yes, number of cases that actually are in court. And then I do have a number of cases from Frank now, once those are filed, where they will essentially be finalized and submitted as well. So the logjam in terms of filing these court cases is about to break, and the amount of work for Frank and his staff is going to be significant.
In this, in this situation, will we have to be, like, is that date, I mean, could it be two years out? Or are those all very...
That's a good question, pressure. That date will, once we have it, it should be within a month. So again, I'm very optimistic that I would be able to sit here in August and say, if we're not, if not we're already in court, then I can tell you we will be in court with, whatever that is.
As far as like a timeline, and this is really bizarre, but you look like you go to court with a family, how long you're in court that I'm feeling, thirty-eight...
Excuse me?
Cases is gonna, it's not like you're doing it in a day, right?
Uh, thirty-eight, it used to be that we could do, the housing authority would do, would have one day a month essentially, and we would arrange it with the court at... one day a month essentially, and we would arrange it with the court at a time. And we would be in court on, let's say, 25 cases. Now, not all 25 residents will show up, some will not show up, it'll be a default judgment, some may skip, things like that. Uh, and we probably end up sitting down and trying to hash out an agreement with maybe half of the cases. So, I mean, for 38 cases, I, I think one day is going to be unrealistic. We're at the mercy of the court in terms of when they schedule it. I would hope that they schedule it over, maybe two, three days at most.
Yeah, it's still, it's still a reasonable timeframe, yeah.
Right, but, I mean, realistically, um, maybe 15 at this point, in terms of how the court procedure moves, even on the day of court, it's a little bit slower than it used to be. Uh, so, maybe 15 is a realistic number in terms of the day of court.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Yeah. And, and then, once we have a judgment?
Once, once we have a judgment, um, which, again, the goal is to avoid a judgment.
That's right.
Um, if, if we have a judgment where there was either a no show, or a violation of an agreement, the housing authority could immediately request a warrant for removal, and that process, the court will tell you if, uh, the warrant will be executed as soon as a week. In reality, probably talking about between two and three weeks, that, uh, between the request of the warrant and that a lockout will happen. We do have one that, for some reason, has lingered significantly, and I haven't been able to get a straight answer on that, but I'm still trying to get a straight answer.
Is that a function of the sheriff's department?
Yeah, uh, sheriffs, it's not the sheriff's office itself, it's assigned to a court officer, which is essentially an independent constable that is not an employee of the sheriff's department.
But who manages?
In Hudson County, uh, the court will assign a court officer, and I think there are five of them, um, currently operating in Hudson County. Usually, we will get one of, one or two of these regulars, so they know the drill, they know the authority. Um, and hopefully, once we're up and running, they will have, have the opportunity to develop that rapport with Frank and kind of streamline how they like to schedule lockdowns, or how the authority does it. So, that's the hope, that, um, we'll get back into that familiarity that we've lost over the last few years.
Gotcha. So, Frank, when you're, are you, is it your department that's handling this, you said it was gonna be a lot, a lot of work, a lot of workload? Okay. So, how do you, how do you make the determination that when the notices go out, somebody has to reply in order to begin the possible repayment, is that correct? So, if a person doesn't reply ever, at what point do you go to the next step?
Well, it goes back to dollar amount, right? So, what we're, what we're working is off of a dollar amount. And, and right now, once we get through these 38, we go to the next batch, we already have a total of 75 in the queue, right? Next month will be another 15 or whatever, it'll keep growing. But those 38 will get off the queue, we'll, we'll shoot down. So, as those shoot down, and as we get rid of the big numbers, little by little, we'll eventually get to the people that owe one month or less. We're, we're eventually gonna get to that, however.
What I'm getting at is, how many, so, one notice goes out, two notices go, how many notices have to go out?
It's a dollar amount, it's a dollar amount.
It's a dollar?
I'm telling you, because what it is?
So, what dollar amount do you make that determination?
So, we started out with, so we started out with the top dollar amount, which was, it was in the twenties, almost $3,000. We're down to, uh, $7,000, $8,000. So, when those people go out, next batch, when we go to select, now we toll people that owe between $6,000 and $8,000, and those are the families that get pulled. And then the next month, we'll get the people between $3,000 and $4,000. And then after that, eventually, we'll get to the point that it's just small amounts.
So, how, how do we avoid the, the exception of favoritism, right? By saying, somebody say, you're working with me, but you're not working with me, and then I gotta send over to the attorney? How, how do you manage that?
So, anybody that goes to the attorney or that receives a letter, and even if we go to court, we'll get the same opportunity for repayment regardless. So, even if that is the point. But my answer to anyone that wants to know, it's a dollar amount. And we will go by the highest dollar amount until we get to the, to the people that owe the least. That's how we're doing it. It's that simple.
And, and why, why call this?
Um, I know we've been talking about this for the past year, and also, I think we spent a lot of time after COVID, trying to work with Hopes and all the lot of other nonprofits and if it can, we've worked with it. So, the whole idea is to not evict anybody, and I think it's a clear process, and maybe to make it easier, maybe we could just write down the process, so it's on record, because I know we've had multiple conversations about the same thing, I'm not sure if you were in attendance when it happened, but Frank has given us a report every month. Um, so, to me, it's been very clear. Um, and maybe the lawyer can explain a little bit more about, I'm not sure what you're talking about, um, fair, it's just policy, it's not, it's just about, this is what we need to do to keep the books running if you don't pay. We'll make sure you have a repayment agreement. So, I'm a little confused on what you mean and how we're not being fair to one person over the other, when we are just trying to keep our doors open and ask people, kind of, to pay the rent, like, if I don't pay my rent, I would be kicked out. Thank you.
It's unfortunate that you're confused. These are questions that I have for counsel, and then questions for, I have for staff. And I don't know what else I could do, but ask questions to things that I don't know.
I'd like to address the fairness question, just a little bit. Um, is that as we approach this with our counsel, um, what we've done is, we've ranked folks behind the 20th, so we've talked to counsel, and we've said, this is how many we can take to court this month. We've taken the top, you said 37?
We have 37.
37. We then got the top 37, just $5, and all of those submitted to court. Then we're gonna take the next 37. That is in no way favorable, no one has walked in the door and we've said, okay, we're gonna let you go.
No.
And we'd be glad to show the figures on that, we'd be glad to be audited on that, or explain that at any time, because there's been no favor to them.
And if I could add one thing, pressure, that may help answer your question. Um, we have had discussions and about, uh, essentially internal guidelines, in terms of how residents are treated once they get to court, what the housing authority would be willing to do, to prevent exactly what I think you're concerned about, which is one person being offered, okay, you have, um, six months to repay the amount that you have, and then somebody else being told, oh, well, you have 24 months, and things like that. Um, so, we have discussed, and prior to that first day in court, that we will have internal guidelines, um, in terms of essentially what the housing authority, um, is willing to do as parameters. Now, I will tell you, at this point, especially without it being finalized, that's not something that I would necessarily recommend broadcasting worldwide. It still is, whether it's settled or not, it still is a negotiation when you show up on the day of court. For example, depending upon where landlord, you may say, okay, I, I'd like to get the tenant to repay over 12 months, but I'm really willing to go to 24. So, there is a lot of give and take there, um, in terms of negotiation, but to prevent exactly what you are concerned about, it would be essentially starting parameters for every one of those negotiations.
So, it really is a process, a place, a policy, a process, a whole negotiation?
I'm sorry.
So, there's no policy or process in place, it's a negotiation?
Yes, and I find that, uh, it's very hard for a housing authority to have a strict policy. For, let me give you an example. Um, if the housing authority said, okay, you have to pay, um, over 12 months, we're not gonna go over 12 months, divide whatever that balance is by 12 months, and it has to be paid on the first of the month. There are going to be people who are gonna come in and say, well, I don't get paid.
Just hang on one second. Can we close that back door?
There are going to be people who are gonna come in and say, well, I don't get paid until the 18th of the month or whatever. So, I can make my rent payment on first, but I can't make that extra installment payment until the 18th. And that's something that I think a landlord has to have flexibility with, because there is a human element to it. Uh, and as long as you set parameters and work within those parameters, it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily have to be a cookie cutter approach. It may be that one tenant will owe, um, $5,000, and they say to you, I can repay that over five months, I'll pay $1,000 a month. And the same tenant will say to you, well, I can only pay $500 a month, and you're paying over 10 months. As long as the authority gets its money within those parameters, I think that's the most correct.
Yeah, I'm asking these questions to better understand the processes, the decision making. So, now I understand that Frank, in team, you're gonna take it, you're looking at the top people, the top numbers, right? Is there, is there a threshold, like 10,000, 20,000?
No, no, it's just in the order.
It's just the top 30?
So, if you take all 1,100 tenants, and then just put them in order of that, and then, so the top number goes first, the second number goes first, whoever over, or?
And I think, Frank, correct me if I'm wrong, the idea initially was to create batches of about 10 to 15. Um, and in some cases, some of those have fallen out, whether because they vacated, or, um, there was some issue where they got delayed to a later batch, things like that. So, I, I think it was in general intended to be batches of about 10 or 15, more manageable, uh, to the commissioner's question, so that once we do get the process rolling and we're in court on, let's say, a monthly basis, you have 10 or 15 there as opposed to 50 cases a month, which would create tremendous burden both for staff and for whoever's going to the court.
Right. So, but at one, at some point, you made that determination, the top whatever number, do you talk to the director about it, or you just go straight to the attorney?
It's a monthly report.
It's a monthly report?
We run, we run, kind of like, we run this, we just run the report, we send it, what the outstanding amount is, and so, those two?
I'm trying to understand, I, I, I don't mean to keep speaking over and interrupting, I, I just trying to get to the substance of the question of what I'm trying to understand, which is, who makes the decision, and how is the decision made to, we're going to the eviction process, we're going to court?
We run a report to see who owes what. Whoever owes the most, like he said, we're taking batches, so if we take the, whoever, every time you run that report, those people that we have not announced in court are still there, right? Because we didn't go to court, they're still on the books. So, let's say, let's say we run a report and there's 100 people, right? The batch one, the first 10 people, we're still there. So, the next month, when I run the report, those 10 people still owe the most money because we did the report and they had the most money to be in there. So, then, I go to, then, then, who are the next people after the first 10 people are there? We go to the batch two. So, we've done that seven times, you're at batch number seven. So, next month, how we pull it is, there is a late free day. So, every month, there's a specific day that changes depending on how the week is or when it is.
It's the fifth business day, it's what the authority?
So.
So, let me, let me pivot slightly to, then, just ask counsel, a, a batch of people who are delinquent, they come before you, are you making the decision, are we beginning the eviction process or not?
No, I don't have any role in decisions. Once they're forwarded to me, those complaints are prepared, and it's the authority's decision.
Okay, so it's an automatic process, the top, the report gets run, the top of those report, they get sent to you, and then, based on that, you just simply begin the process?
That's my understanding with respect to the first part, but I can't give you that answer.
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand.
The, the second part is, once it's given to us, I have no discretion, I prepare the batches as they come to me.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Uh, I just wanted to ask, um, what kind of thinking back on what you reported about the, you said we just, you said, I just wanted everybody to know that we have been getting 20 people in attendance Mondays and Wednesdays. Um, we have seen that Mondays are a little slower than Wednesday, we're still trying to figure out why. But, um, and again, yesterday, we had a little girl as young as six years old attend, and a gentleman that was probably in his twenties that was there. So, we, we have arranged, I think, um, which is great to see that range. I'm also, um, a little bit saddened to see that the workshops that the city put together, I, this Friday, tomorrow is their last day. I know they have been doing amazing work, my children have been participating in the program as well, so, um, I would hope that the city would reconsider also, having another program like that for, for the children of the housing authority. Again, I don't think it was just open to the housing authority, I think it was everybody, but I did see that the majority of the kids were from the housing authority, so that's , yeah. For housing for Hobo gift, you said that the, um, it went out, the, I guess, the RFP, I guess, the proposal, the invitation, right? So, you said it's gonna take a month, so you said, so it will be out till August 11, right? And then, after that, we would bring it back to the board for an individual at that center?
Correct.
Now, the, the garbage cans, you're right, I'm gonna tell you, the garbage cans that we're getting, I, I thought I saw an email that the city was supposed to be kind of, like, you were supposed to kind of be taking back, you know, the city on what they're doing towards their rodent, or something like that. Is, are these receptacles that are, that we're getting, or something that the city has?
They, they don't have them yet, no, uh, but I, the way we're approaching this with the city is, this is actually a pilot program for the entire city. If it works well for us, then they want to expand it.
So, they're gonna try and get up there?
Yeah, and we really welcome it, this is a nice, it works, it works well too with the authority because of the sheer size of the receptacles too. So, it might not be, you know, if you, if you imagine going up First Street, it might not work there, right? But because it's the authority and we have more room, um, I think it'll work well back there.
Yeah, do you know all of those, those open trash cans we have on Harrison, on Jackson?
Yeah.
They won't be those open trash cans, they'll be contained, so somebody puts something
We just dedicate the residence to actually put it in there. I think that's one of the biggest problems that's had.
Always that.
Is that the residents, although sometimes the garbage cans are empty, they are throwing it on the floor. So, I think that's a part of the issue as well. And when you said the exterior door repacksments, the gates, is that for Harrison Gardens, is that the inside gates?
Yes, yes, for, for the, the C D D G money section, the parking lot gates, yeah. We are talking about the possibility of putting gates at the horseshoe, gates, at the horseshoe. When you come into the horseshoe, you gotta have an ID to come into the horseshoe with the vehicle. You gotta be one of the people that are there.
I'm gonna be double advocate, what happens when there isn't a free person and they can't get in?
Of course, we're gonna have to deal with that. We talked to, to Amazon about a central delivery spot, one of the boxes, right? And we've drilled that idea around for Amazon and the P S.
They have a key thing too on the door, is that the right thing now?
No, they do not anymore. They, they used to. They, there are the key things that they installed at our doors, were interfering with our entry systems. One of the things we found out, that when we had a problem with our entry systems, everyone would say, but it turned out that what they installed was interfering with our system, so we had to have to take them off. Uh, so, we're looking into delivery locations, I think, now.
Oh, okay.
But, but, it's not a problem that can't be solved, but it's a good point.
And I think also, what you forgot about your report director, was that as the security committee, they meet this month?
Yes, did I not, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Unfortunately, we didn't have the ability to meet with the police department this month, but we did meet as a committee, um, and we discussed the new, um, policies as far as the grilling and, um, everything else. So, I think there, there's going to be the implementation coming down the pipe, a policy that we're going out to the residents, um, which is just a way to kind of curb everything that's happening, and for us to kind of have a better handle, and know who's having these things and doing.
Thank you for bringing that up, because I'd like to make it clear, the city has passed that ordinance, that the city can enforce open container laws on housing authority property. So, if somebody's sitting in front of this building with an open container of alcohol, they can be taken in and door arrested, right? Right in front of this building, or at the main, uh, at the, at the main, um, campus. So, there's, we know open containers of alcohol in either place, and we think that's gonna, that's gonna help quite a bit, so.
I agree with that, and I'm, as a resident, I just wanna say that you can't pick and choose when this policy is going to be implemented, or any of the policies that we have, right? I think as commissioners, we spend so much time in committee meetings, trying to come up with policies after listening to the residents' concerns, and what they're, you know, and, and what they're going through, and then we come together to put together these policies. And I know as a resident, sometimes what happens is, we spend so much time, the policy is put in place, and then nothing happens, right? And that's frustrating, that's frustrating. And that's frustrating, that's frustrating as a resident, I think it should be frustrating as a commissioner, if you're serving on a committee and putting time to put these policies in place. So again, I just think that it's important for us that it's not only for some, that it's for all, and at all events, small events, big events, it doesn't matter what it is, if it's not permitted, it should always be enforced.
That's a very good point.
Yeah.
It's, I think, Commissioner Samford was getting to that a little bit about how we're doing certain things with parking and then even with the back payments of rent. If you do it once, everyone's gonna continue to do it, right? If you slide back one time and you don't enforce that policy, you're gonna get to a point where, and look, it's frustrating, right? I sit on this board as a councilman, people come to the microphone all the time and they make accusations about things, and it's because that's one time that somebody slipped back and didn't enforce that one policy, then it's all the time, or it's perceived to be all the time, right? So I think it's a very valid point, and I...
And I couldn't agree with you both more, and also by enforcing the policies, people often get quite angry at us and accuse us of signaling them out or being unfair to them or taking retaliatory, and we're following the policy by the letter to the absolute best of our people.
Mr. President, about the resolution?
Actually, I have a different question. I was looking at the last director's report, director of the board, I didn't necessarily see it on this report, have we hired a development, is that the development coordinator, is that the title, or?
Yeah, it's right on the front of our report, right in front.
I'd say these are the, we've advertised following open positions.
Okay, so development director is still on film?
That's correct.
Got it. Have we received any applications?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are we still accepting applications?
Yes.
You still can't, right?
Yeah.
I have enough to do, Robert.
Resolution number 2024-701, resolution authorizing the payment of monthly disbursement of the Hoboken Housing Authority. Motion?
Sorry?
Questions, concerns?
Yes, these minutes are incomplete, and I would ask them to table this reservation.
Can you point out what's missing?
Well, so we have president, we have council, we have staff, we have minutes, eligible agents, and then single line public comments.
I'm sorry, then what, then what?
Single line public comment, and then the executive director's report. There was a great, there was a motion to suspend the agenda during that public comment period that is not reflected here.
I think it was being connected on the court reporter's committee.
That should, that may be part of the transcript, but it should be part of the minutes.
Okay, so, and again, I don't have a problem holding on the minutes with you. Just the way, and again, this board is different than the way we interact with council, but usually if there's, somebody finds that, shoot an email out so we can correct it before we get to the meeting, so that we can have it and move it forward. It's not really that big of a deal to hold on the minutes, at least in my opinion, but I think it just works so much better. I know Commissioner Edwards sent out an email, he proposed a discrepancy, it was straightened out amongst the staff, so hopefully Hoboken can do that.
Well, I certainly understand what you're saying, the record is incomplete, I have sent emails at times before the meeting or the day of the meeting, and I'm told that certain items cannot be added to the agenda or items cannot be corrected. I received one such communication from council today, so if that's, I would just ask that this be...
Like I said, it's not a big deal, I don't have a problem holding on the minutes.
Motion table.
Okay, so motions table is there?
A second?
Can I ask?
Yes.
The question comes, probably correct. I would ask that the commissioner send me a list of things that he finds wrong in his opinion in the minutes, and we'll draft them by set of minutes for the next meeting, and we can approve both of them in one meeting.
Commissioner, can you get that on?
Yes. Great. So there's a motion and a second?
There's a motion and a second.
To do what?
To table the minutes.
To table the minutes for this meeting.
Director, call them.
David Edwards?
Yes.
Anthony Forbes?
Yes.
Barbara Reyes?
Yes.
Jean Rodriguez?
Yes.
Michael Russo?
Hi.
Erica Seitzman?
Yes.
James Sanford?
Yes.
Resolution number 2024-701, resolution authorizing the payment of monthly disbursement of the Hoboken Housing Authority.
Motion?
Second.
Questions, concerns? Director, call them.
Excuse me, sorry. The line items for page two, item one, it's Patrick Waterman. Was that in the first draft of the agenda that was sent out earlier, or was this part of the corrected? Was that recently added, or has that always been part of the agenda?
Emily, I believe that was added.
Yes, that was a late add, I think that was distributed until this afternoon, it was identified by that asterisk.
I see, so the asterisk thing became added today?
Yeah, so let's put notes on the last page, Commissioner.
So why, why are these being added just now?
It was a, it was a late receipt.
A late receipt?
I would like to make motion to remove item one on page two for Patrick Waterman, for the listed bills.
Motion, is there a second? Sorry, Commissioner Sanford, you have a second?
Thank you.
If there are so far the questions, concerns, director, could you call them?
David Edwards?
It's staying.
Anthony Forbes?
No.
Barbara Reyes?
Yes.
Jean Rodriguez?
Yes.
Michael Russo?
Hi.
Erica Seitzman?
Yes.
James Sanford?
No.
Resolution number 2024-703, resolution authorizing the approval of the 2025 agency plan.
Motion, second.
Questions, concerns?
Is there someone who's going to agree to some point?
I just, I just wanna state directly, I know you and I had a conversation about this, I know they were in question in reference to the resident advisory board, and during, and in it, it says that they will continue to meet at 1 o'clock, I think that that's unfair, you're a board that represents the housing authority and the tenants of the housing authority. As such, I don't think that a meeting in the middle of the day is something that benefits our residents. There are residents who work and cannot make those meetings, and if you wanna make it transparent, I think those meetings should be held in the evening, open to the entire residents, to all residents of all AMs, because again, you're representing your tenants, and if your tenants can't meet with you, because when your meeting is at 1 o'clock in the afternoon and they're working, it's not fair, so I, I think that that should be changed, that's my personal opinion, I don't have a problem with that.
What page is that on?
I don't really remember. It's unfortunate we did that.
We'd be happy to make that change, by the way.
Yeah, I can remember, I'm sorry.
As long as the director knows what it is.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, as long as the director knows what it is. We'll be happy to make that change. Emily, you wanna give us a brief review?
So the resolution before you is the submission of the agency plan to the HUD Doorfield Office, it's a requirement that we submit this 60 days prior to the commencement of fiscal year, which for us is October 1st, so a requirement is to have this submitted by August 1st. The agency plan includes both a five-year plan and an annual plan. The annual plan is basically our goals, our objectives over the next year, and the five-year plan is more so in the long-term nature of the authority, and the primary things are what we've been speaking of in the past, going through this redevelopment process, getting, in the upcoming year, we want to get our Section 18 demo disco applications in, ensure that we have commitments for housing assistance payment contracts on all of our AMs. It is continuing with modernization efforts, it is taking units offline that are going to take a number of months to rehab, because we are still maintaining our housing stock while we are going through this redevelopment process. It includes goals such as project basin vouchers, that RFP has been issued and is in the process of going through the committee, and hopefully we can get some of those vouchers awarded to the respondents of that RFP. And that is the bulk of this, the five-year plan and agency plan, excuse me, annual plan that comprises the agency plan that is important.
I'd like to add that in many ways, this is a plan that answers to HUD that we will follow HUD guidelines. Our goal is to follow HUD guidelines, that we will implement the programs correctly, that we will pay attention to laws like the Violence Against Women Act, those types of things, so. It's essentially where we are, we can modify it at any time, we have a significant modification, we would hold a hearing process, we've done that before, when we've done change to our admissions policy, if you remember those, those were, those were a public hearing, coming to the board, getting preliminary approval, coming back, those are all in compliance and what we promised to do in this annual plan.
Well, so I'm seeing your signature, several certifications, is that director?
Yes.
So how did you go about making the certification?
Well, I mean, beyond reviewing and reading the actual certifications and knowing what we do, how we operate, checking our policies, I'm comfortable that my certifications are the certifications I'm ahead of, right?
So there's a civil rights certification, as, how did you go about determining that people's civil rights in this housing authority were not violated?
I do it every day, every day.
Every day?
Yeah.
That's good, thank you. So today, a resident, a member of the public asserted that their civil rights have been violated, how will you handle that?
I will wait for proof, when I see proof, we'll move it from there. People can make allegations all day long, right? I mean, I can come in and say you robbed the bank yesterday, how do you handle that? You gotta have some proof, you gotta come in, and something that we can follow that track. Again, people can come here and make allegations, but if they're not true, they're not true.
Well, I'm gonna answer your question, so.
You needed to roll that back.
I didn't ask, I didn't ask a question.
You caught.
Yeah, I just didn't ask it.
So I would imagine you've investigated, not waited for evidence?
Well, if the person comes in and shows us something, we will investigate them. It depends on the case, of course, if somebody has been in this room 20 times saying that we've broken the law and no one's brought any evidence after a while, and you've asked them, please come in, please show us, there's a point where you don't believe them anymore, and, you know, come in, show us something. If you're gonna make an allegation toward me or my staff, show us something.
I agree.
I don't, I don't hire private investigators to investigate every time someone comes in and says something, it's just, we'll be always, the housing authority's time.
So as part of the certification, how often do you get, say, legitimate complaints versus bogus complaints?
Oh, I don't think I've seen a legitimate complaint in a long, long time. I mean, if somebody comes in and says our manager disrespected them, we bring the manager in and talk to them. If the manager says, if the resident comes in and says that they, the manager calculated their rent wrong, we bring them in and review their rents with them, we follow up on any complaint that's made, as long as it's a valid complaint.
So there have been passed valid complaints, I can't remember exactly when, but they've occurred?
Maybe, yeah.
Right, and it doesn't mean that a valid complaint is to process it in any way, so long as we as a housing board are addressing it in some way, that would be, would that fulfill the requirements of the certification?
Yeah, I would say so.
Of just not ignoring it?
I would say so, yes, yes.
So could you do me a favor and help the board understand how many complaints have been submitted this year, civil rights complaints?
Well, I don't think I've had one.
Not one?
Yeah, correct.
And tonight doesn't count?
Well, it counts if somebody brings in something. Again, you can catch me outside the parking lot and say, you guys are discriminating, and I'll say, well, where, when, come and see me, come and see me and show me, but I can't run the organization based on rumors, I just can't.
Well, I agree, you can't run rumors, but certain parties related to this complaint have already confessed on public record that this is a legitimate complaint?
I don't know of any civil rights that have come in, I just don't know of any civil rights complaints that have come in that have broken somebody's civil rights. And I would ask any person like that to put in writing and officially submit a complaint, and if it needs to go to a prosecutor, if it needs to go someplace, we'll certainly take action. But I don't know of any of those, I haven't seen any of those that are violating somebody's civil rights.
Then, not to belabor the point, but any resident of this housing authority that believes that their civil rights have been violated can file a complaint, and that file, that complaint should go to who?
It should come to me.
To you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
Yes, one last question. So based on this overall discussion, would you consider not signing the civil rights certification?
No, sir.
Thank you, I'm done.
Director, any questions concerned? Can we call the director?
David Edwards?
Sorry, my vote.
The resolution authorizing the approval of the 2025 agency plan.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I apologize, I have something else, go ahead, I don't mean to interrupt.
It's a vote.
We're calling the vote, we're calling the vote.
Well, I do have a question, I have another question.
You should, afterwards.
Anthony Forbes?
Yes.
Barbara Reyes?
Yes.
Jean Rodriguez?
Yes.
Michael Russo?
Hi.
Erica Seitzman?
Yes.
James Sanford?
No.
Yeah, the only reason Commissioner I put you off like that is because we were in the middle of the vote, promise votes.
You're absolutely correct.
Would you like to?
Yes, I like, ask a question. So the very last page of the certification is a document, it's called Disclosure of Lobbying Activities, you help me to understand what that is, Director?
Yeah, if the housing authority is lobbying on behalf of a particular group, political group, if you're a registered lobbyist, then we would have to disclose that. We cannot do lobbying at this housing, or any housing authority, but this one.
So you just said we do not, so you have not ever done any lobbying?
Correct.
And if you were, if lobbying were to occur, happen by a member of staff, would that violate the certification?
I believe that if it wasn't on behalf of the housing authority, it would be an individual issuing... it would be an individual issue with that particular employee.
So forgive my ignorance. Help me to understand what a violation of the disclosure of lobbying activities would look like?
Well, I would think, in my non-legal opinion, that if I went to one of our congressmen and said, the housing authority will give you $5,000 if you pass a certain legislation or vote for it, that would be a lobbying activity. If we came and said, we as a housing authority, I'm sure that may get into, that may get into just pure bribery, although the recent Supreme Court case even questions that, right? That's interesting. But I think if we were to form a nonprofit that was to get money, spend HUD money, or even money that was donated to us to actual lobby congressman, senators, then we would be lobbying. And we have not done that. Hope Open Housing Authority has not done that.
If a member of staff or a commissioner established a group on housing authority property to advocate and lobby for a particular issue, would that be a violation?
Phew, I don't know. It's not the housing authority action, is it?
Well, it's a commission, potentially.
But it's not the housing authority action. Did the board vote on it? Would the board, you have to come to the board and say, does the board want to fund this? If the board says yes, and it's a lobbying activity, it may be a violation. But I don't know of any action like that that's been taken.
Counsel, could you provide any guidance?
Commissioner, we were not involved at all in the preparation of this document, and I am not prepared to apply an audit.
Okay, understood. Then I'd just like to make a note for the record that this certification that was just done, which I already know about, really could use some more work. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanford. Resolution number 2024, looking forward to a resolution to adopt and approve the single audit for fiscal year October 1st, 2022 to September 30th, 2023 of the Housing Authority of the City of Orlando presented by Potavian Company CPN. Questions, concerns?
Well, I think we covered quite a bit. Well, I have questions, comments. So going through your internal audit, there were several deficiencies noted. And you had discussed in your executive director report that some of these deficiencies have existed for?
18 months?
An extended period of time. So I'd like to speak to the auditor about these deficiencies. He's here. Okay. Yes. Identify yourself.
Good evening, my name is Mike Worries.
Mike Worries?
M A U R I C D. Yes, Commissioner.
Well, could you begin with explaining what the deficiencies are?
Sure. For the last several years, there have been two remaining deficiencies on the housing authority's audit. And they both dealt with compliance for tenant recertification in both the low rent public housing program and the housing charge voucher program. Specifically, those deficiencies include the lack of the earned income verification detail in the tenant file, Form 9886, which is a signature form where the tenant releases the housing authorization to request documentation on behalf of the tenant. I believe there were certain instances of the 5058 either missing or not correct. And those are primarily the significant, the major issues that were missing in the files. They've been ongoing for the last several years. And I know that Mark, I guess he had, you know, in open COVID, there was a little bit of lax in this stuff. I know that he was hired an MK and some of its responses or central organizations to provide additional training for the housing authority staff. But some of those deficiencies have persisted over the last several years.
When were, when were the deficiencies first observed? What year are they?
So those deficiencies go back before we do the audits. They may be carried forward, I think, since 2014 or 15. But those deficiencies have been in the audit every single year. That's noted in the report, you can see all the years.
So that's almost 10 years. So what were the recommendations to address the audit concerns?
Well, typically, the recommendations are going to be additional training for the staff, more internal controls, such as review of the tenant files. Specifically, that's supposed to happen, and you feel like you've seen that form as well, right, as opposed to sample a bunch of the tenant files. And I've been speaking with Frank and with Mark at various times during the year that they had gone from reviewing just a sample of 10 or 20 files to, I think, half of the files. I think Frank has indicated to Mark and maybe the rest of the finance committee that, you know, the next step would be to review 100% of the files before the audit. So what typically happens, Commissioner, is we take a sample of the tenant files. We select 40 tenant files from each program.
What percentage would that represent, taking 40?
40 is a statistically calculated sample size that gives us a good sample so that everything, you have that ability that every, there's two discrepancies, every 40 will find two. It's just not.
Let me share with you. I used to be a procurement manager, I used to deal with audits, so I am familiar with audit processes. So I'm trying to understand the sample size that you took. What percentage of the records would that encompass? So is it just 40 as a standard?
It's 40 as a standard. If there's less than 250 units, we do 10%. Anything over 250 units, 40 gives us coverage.
Okay. So remind me again, this audit, the scope of this audit, this document, what is the scope? What was your, what was your direction that was given?
So the audit for the housing authority is basically two audits, if you want to look at it. One of them is a financial audit, and the other is a compliance audit that's conducted according to OMB 8133, the single audit.
Conducted according to what?
OMB 8133, which is the single audit act. So under the single audit act, we are required to test compliance requirements in the compliance agents, eligibility, special asset provisions, capital funding, we get procurement. But in different programs, have different compliance requirements in that matrix. And we design tests based on conversations on internal controls of what we need to look for to ensure that those are the files that the authority is computing rents properly, right? So that if the rents are not computed properly, then the US government is overpaying tenant rents. So, you know, that's why we look at the 505 forms. EIB is important to make sure that tenants are recording all their income. Allowances are up along, because you get up certain allowances for your age and so forth. That one with 5058 form. Those are some of the tests. The 508 form is a very important form. EIB is, in my opinion, critical, particularly it supports the rent, the income of the tenant. They're supposed to have birth certificates, social security forms, which is the citizen, 214 declaration form. There haven't been any problems with those issues. It just seems to be on the EIB and the 9886 form were the biggest items that were missing from this year's audit.
So there were two audits. Was there any problem on the financial side?
On the financial side, we didn't make, there weren't any findings. We did make, as I was talking about, we gave you just about eight or nine adjustment journal entries to make the financial statements in the form of the gap. And we didn't note any material. Because some of those were, some were portion out of L, what time, some were just adjustments. But we did make some adjustments to the financial statements. And we noted the findings as according to the balance part of the audit.
When you performed the financial audit side, what was being, what was being reviewed? What was the scope of that? What are you covering from that audit? What is your direction?
On that part of the audit, I don't have the exact number. So that's based upon a risk assessment, right? You define the audit areas of what are going to be material audit areas. So in the case of the Hope Open Housing Authority, cash is a significant audit area. Fixed assets, for example, debt, grant, and grant revenue. So those are four big ones that might not be complete lists, but let's just go with those four big areas. So we'll do various tests. So for the bank balances, we'll look at your bank reconciliations, confirm the bank balances. We'll look and see whether items listed as outstanding clear to subject or amount that cash is complete and is owed, cash is reported properly, investments are reported properly.
In essence, that income is being recorded properly?
Well, cash is going to be, right? So income is going to come, income is going to come based upon two tranches of income. This is going to be for the tenants, that's going to be through the AR system. And there's various controls over AR, who has access to AR, who can issue credits for AR, who can add new tenants, who can, who can lead tenants to post AR, who can post cash. Those items go to the factor of risk assessment for AR. And then the second part of your revenue is going to be your subsidy that you receive from HUD. And you'll get subsidy under the low rent program for operating subsidy and capital fund. And on the voucher program, you get the half subsidy and the admin subsidy.
So earlier, you had mentioned you divides and perform various tests as part of the audit. So when you performed the financial audit side, what kind of tests did you perform?
So we do a test of cash receipts. We will select cash receipts from there, we'll mask them up to the rent note to make sure that the rent collected is the rent, that is charged as the rent that's collected. Cash receipts, make sure the cash is deposited properly and timely to the correct accounts. In that case, for fixed assets, we would look at your procurement. If you get, if you're over the bidding threshold, I believe for you, you have a QDA, so it's around $40,000. So then you have three bids that fixed assets probably capitalize. That they're probably being appreciated, we'll look at the depreciation, that the usefulized sense. Further accounts payable, we'll do the search for unrecording liabilities. We'll request the October cash disbursements. And we'll review, we'll make selections based upon materiality. And we'll look at those disbursements to see if any should be approved. And if necessary, we'll make that approve. For debt, we'll do debt combinations, we'll roll forward debt. We'll see that these amortizations get those. Those are various tests, those are the main audit areas.
Thank you. So of those many tests that you performed, two of them struck out. What kind of tests, if any, did you do on income verification?
Income verification with the tenants?
Yes.
So?
In calculating rents.
So in calculating rents, we get the, we get the rent loss. And we look at the rents that are charged, that are charged through the accounts receivable system. We'll compare those rents to what was calculated on the 5058 form. There should be an agreement. If they're not in agreement, the question would come is, why are we charging, you know, Joe Smith, you know, $800, we're calculating $700? Or why are we charging $600 when he shouldn't be paying $500? None of those issues were discovered, there weren't those issues. The issue that was, was we didn't support the tenant's income with the EIB system. So now we're going, you're kind of getting from compliance to the financial part. So there's a little overlap, there's a little overlapping in that respect.
So when you did the tests, you did not find any test result that was someone's being under-calculated or over-calculated?
No, the difference is that we'll find that utility allowances. You'll see that some tenants didn't pay the rent. And we'll say, okay, we charged them $500, they didn't collect any rent. So we'll ask, we'll say, what happened here? Zero. Oh, but the rent, we'll see the accounts receivable. That person might have a bad balance, as you know, the allowance to a tenant on collectible rents is kind of high, stemming from the pandemic and so forth. That's very common now with almost every house. You're not alone dealing with the high collectible cap, that's been a issue.
So for this audit, you didn't find anything with regards to the rent collections?
Not in the sample size that we selected.
So if the tenant was not paying the rent, just like Frank was talking about earlier, that would have been discovered during, if it was, say, one of the 40s selected that we?
Right, so if we selected a tenant, and we asked her to deposit tickets, and we look in at the 5058 form. So we'll say, okay, we're charging the right amount of rent, we didn't have a deposit ticket. Or that person didn't pay this month. Or they paid, they paid the next month, or they paid, made a partial payment. Those are all items, situations that have come up. Late fees sometimes are included, some people want to pay the arrangements.
So if a issue did exist, and it was not included within the sample 40, it was simply an unknown, you would not be able to detect an audit issue that is not within the sample size?
That would be correct, if the tenant that you're referring to was not included in the sample size, we wouldn't know about it. However, the sample size, based on this little calculations, gives us the comfort that that anomaly, it would be an outlier, if it would have happened. Now, if the housing authority has a concern in that area, they are more than, we are more than happy to entertain that for you to bring that to our attention. And we can expand the scope of those tests on behalf of the housing authority to see that, if that is in fact the case. That can be done prior to the audit. If, you know, I know you have a finance committee. Nothing prevents the finance committee from requesting a meeting with the auditors before we begin the audit. We can have a meeting before the audit, you can bring any concern you have, and we can adjust the scope, timing of the audit, you know, as is possible and as necessary to alleviate your concerns.
I think it's one of the reasons we're asking you to come back and I told her to come.
So Frank explained in a number of instances where grants have been unpaid. I'm kind of curious, how did that show up in your audit?
Well, that shows up in the allowance doubtful accounts. So we get a list.
Do you allow what?
Doubtful accounts. So we ask that the housing authority now uses a PHA web as their software. So the software, the general ledger, it has subledges. So the subledger is the aging report, right? The aging report is going to list 30, 60, 90 days of how long the period of time each tenant owes their balance that has not been paid. So we would ask, we would ask Emma or get someone on the staff, okay, here's somebody that has, we'll look at the total balance for the allowance doubtful accounts. And then we'll look and see at that list and see if that allowance is appropriate for the amount of money that's owed. So if we look at that list and they said, okay, you have people that owe you for over $100,000 or more than $90,000. $100,000 for more than 90 days and your allowance is $25,000, we're going to say, wait a minute, your allowance is woefully understated. We need to increase that allowance, right, which will increase your operating expense. And at that point, those people then at some point should be brought to the board and you have to make the determination that only the board can to write those balances off if you don't feel they're going to be collecting. A lot of times the housing authority will tell us, well, we have formal agreements with them. So if they have formal agreements and the tenants are paying, you know, those balances for some parts should remain. But we found that even though you have formal agreements, you're never going to collect the full amount of any amount. If someone owes you $25,000, it's very unlikely you're going to collect that full amount by the time you're paying $40 or $40, whatever the agreement is. So that's one of the problems that many housing authorities are dealing with. You're not going to get judged or throw people out, right? Because they're already in, they're living in a system of, you know, quality housing. So that's the issue, balancing that on how to keep the tenants here, explain, educate them that by not paying the rent, they're going to get a reduced service because you need the money in order to provide the services to make their little acts comfortable in the way. As any landlord would.
And by the way, I really appreciate you explaining this to myself and the public. I, as a purchase manager, I've done procurement for over 20 years. I've been through so many different types of audits. So in our housing authority, what kind of test would you, help us understand, what kind of test would you create to determine whether a sample, any sample is paying the correct rent, the correct rent calculation? So Philip, the examples that you were giving earlier today, this tenant A paying $400, but tenant B is paying $500, and one should be paying more and one should be paying less. How would you test for that in your audit?
So again, in the sample size that we make in that 40 selections, we have a test that shows the name of the tenant, what the rent charge is for the rent goal. And then there is a, you know, a blank space for the amount collected where we have to pull the file to look at it. And then we have 15 or so checkboxes of things that we have to look for and find. One of them is, is there a problem, is there a 5058? And does the rent on the 5058 agree to an amended or a dispendment? And is that amount agreed to what was charged on the rental? And then from that point, we look at the cash collected. So it is almost a three or four step process to test that rent. Now, as an interim tenant's rent, that's the housing authority's responsibility to request during recertification to get their paysubs, I guess you would say tax returns, although I never know if the tax returns actually filed or not, so paysub is better. Third party letters from employers. EIB is the best way. EIB though is a little behind, you're never going to get most current quarter, it's a quarter behind, or a half a quarter behind. But it still gives you an idea if they're employed, if they have a current paysub. You can always send a letter to the employer to get their hours or their payday. Those are some of the items that should be done during recertification. And that's what the 9886 form is for, is the tenant authorizes you to contact third party people and never have to verify their income.
So when you're conducting these tests, are you, how does one account for a record that you would be reviewing where there is, say, an error? That the informant, instead of a one, that was placed a two? How would you, how would that affect your?
When you say a one or a two?
So is it an error in the calculation?
Well, there's an error. So if there's, right, okay. So on our test sheet, as I indicated, right, it looks like a grid. It has an incoming tenant, it has their rent, it has a column for the, you know, the rent charge and the rent collected. And then it has about, off the top of my head, I'd say about 15 checkboxes, right? So everything is checked off. If one of those items is not there, you would denote it with an X. And then there's a comment section and you would write that. And then you would, at the bottom of it, you can go and list in detail what the deficiency was. So you could say, okay, if you put an X, the 5058 is not in the file, or there was an error in the income calculation. And then if that happens repeatedly, we would probably get those and make up a separate work paper to indicate what the differences were. So we can bring it back to Mark so they can have, these are the actual issues that were wrong.
So when, so when information is, on a record that has been selected is incomplete or incorrect in some way, how does that affect your audit? Seeing as you've saved 40 records, but now you've got 39 records that are potentially correct versus one record that is not correct?
Right, so.
But it comes with a finding, right?
Yeah, but that's exactly right. If, so these were, you know, raised to the level of finding because of the amount that there were in the file. And I believe we're sending Emma the efficiency to showing all the files that were officiated. So that's what, if you have those efficiencies, then we would, if we find, really, I believe to let you do it. If it goes more than one, you know, one you could say, ah, that might have been just a one-off and we could look at another couple of files and not make a finding out of it. But if you get a two or three?
If you found the one, you would follow up potentially and see what happened?
Correct, right. And when we get past one, like in this case?
Can we say something? Okay.
Yeah, in this case, there were so many, there was no choice but to put a finding in there.
Got it. So?
So the finding is just to bring to your attention that you have an internal control issue that needs to be addressed, to strengthen the controls.
So during your audit, during the testing, how do you determine what is a mistake slash input error versus a potential intentional omission? Or dishonest act?
Well, first of all, the audit is not designed to protect fraud. They're in the hump to our attention through our normal tests, we'll let you know, but we're not looking, that's not something that the audit is designed for. However, to answer your question, if the, if the form is not in the file, that's just not an oversight, like seven files, just we're not doing. There's a problem with either the system or the individual that's responsible for that group of files. If the EIB is not there, there's no record of why it wasn't there. It wasn't, we tried to get, we couldn't. You have access to the EIB system, there's no reason why, that's not one of the first things you print out when the tenant comes in, you go in, you get the EIB, you ask them for their information, it should be there. The errors that we found really weren't, where you wouldn't want to say, the only way that would be costing the authority money is if the tenant, we didn't do EIB and the tenant said, well, they only make $500 a week, but they really made $2,000 a week. That would cost, that would be impacting financially wise, it would impact your app or your subsidy payments, you should be paying more than what you should have been paying. Whereas if someone went in and, oh, okay, I'm the tenant AR person, and this would be a fraudulent act, right? Oh, I know my friend lives in this apartment, I'm just going to wipe out their rent because I have the ability to give a rent credit and nobody's authorized.
How would you determine, how would you uncover that? How would the audit?
Well, one of the controls on that is, is that the access to giving rent credits or adding or deleting tenants is restricted to only the supervisor of the department. If it's given to everybody, then that would be an internal control act and the possibility of that happening is greatly enhanced.
So within that realm, what is the internal control to handle a tenant that potentially under reports their income?
EIB.
Yeah, and what is EIB again?
Air income verification, it's a state website.
Sorry, wait a second. Air income verification?
Air income verification, it's a state, it's a state website that the authority has access to. And you can enter that and enter the tenant's name and social security number and it will pull up a pretty detailed report with the name of the employer, how much they make every week, how much they make a quarter, it's a pretty detailed report.
You currently use that, correct?
Yes.
You do?
Yeah.
You do.
We were just saying that it was not present in all the files, it was not done for everyone.
Got you.
And through the state, so you don't record it?
No, the state, yeah, the state gives it to you in quarters, but it gives it to you weekly, but then you can get a pretty detailed report from the EIB.
So after approximately 10 years of this chronic deficiency, how is it that the determination that this is a training issue comes to me? The remedy, it seems, from the recommendation of the audit, is additional training. But it would seem to indicate that it is more than a training issue.
Right, so because it's gone on for so long, as training was an issue over the last, let's just say since I believe we audit, I think, five or six years, there's been turnover in staff. There's been certainly turnover in the section of the coordinator, at least in that department. I know Frank came from another housing authority about two years ago, maybe two or three years ago. I believe there's been some turnover in the project managers or those people. So yeah, training could become an issue all the time if you have enough turnover. And again, again, like Tony said at the top, the supervisors of those departments or the project managers are supposed to be reviewing those files to ensure that the caseworkers aren't doing what they're supposed to do. So that's the internal control. There's not a lot of other things you can do than have procedures, right? Checklist, make sure you follow this checklist and then ensure that someone's following that checklist by reviewing the files.
So what is, what is your recommendation coupled with what are we doing differently to address this chronic audit deficiency?
So I've been told by Mark, in addition to the NPK training, that they are considering going to reviewing 100% of the files.
So, and that was in my report earlier, I detailed, my report earlier, we've set up a quality assurance department to review files when they, that's number one. Well, number one was training and that hasn't worked very well. We agree, it hasn't worked very well. We had issues with our previous director of management. Frank said, we've tried training, we've hit it hard, we've had NPK to verify the files and do training with our managers, that hasn't worked very well. So our next step is to bring an organization like NPK from the outside to go through 100% of our files and do that this fiscal year. And then have Mike and his crew, or Gary, come back and take a look at our progress and I'll tell.
So that, I'm sure, yes, the last step, and I know Mark, he discussed this at a meeting, would be then to outsource or a recertification process through a company like NPK. Now, that would have financial impact on the authority in terms of costs. It would also impact staff to some degree, I would imagine, for those considerations that Mark would have to consider, how the people would go back.
So Frank, I'm sorry, right now, and I think I asked this the other day, are we moving toward a fully digitized filing?
We're not there yet. We're just not there yet. We're moving toward that and I'll agree with that.
Yeah.
But.
And the reason I ask that is because I think that that could help in a lot of ways where there are filing systems out there, there are management systems out there from a digital perspective that will flag those issues, right? So if you pull up a tenant and, you know, for whatever reason, they already flagged that, hey, you have one or two or three or five different deficiencies in that file, right? So there's something?
Our PHA web system will do a number of those things already.
They what?
They will do a number of those things already. Not what he's talking about.
Right.
What he's talking about is very, I mean, I would love if we could find something that can do that. What he's talking, what our software can do is that we can take those files, scan them in, and they're already part of the permanent file in PHA. So besides having the regular things that PHA does, we have scanned paperwork in each file at each reset. That's what we've been doing now with the program. But it won't, it's just, you just scan it in. It's not.
Right, it's a PDF.
There's nothing there saying, hey, there's something you're missing. I mean, that would be very sophisticated.
Yeah, once you get, once you get the, once you get the PDFs in, right, you're never going to be able to do it with those past files. But if you get the right system, the system will actually manage it and it will, it's not just a PDF copy, right? It's actually part of the system. So all those things will be flagged in there. So definitely, yeah, there's definitely stuff out there.
I also, if you don't mind, I just sent you where to go get it so that you guys can have a copy of it, the chart that you were talking about. What he uses to do the audit for us is what we are now using for our quality. So the person who is in charge of our quality review is Patty. So she has her, that's all she does now. She gets files from every office and all she does is go through the files. As she's going through those files, she's using his chart and making sure, and yes, she's finding things that are missing. So then that goes back to the manager, the manager then makes it right and then it goes back to Patty for a final check. Now, that is the process of moving towards 100% of the review. Last year's, you know, was that we went to about 20% of the files were being reviewed by Jimena at that time. That's when she first came in and we started the tenant accounts receivable. Unfortunately, and that was kind of my point about what I said earlier. In any town in USA where a manager can focus on his files, the files look great, I have the privilege of being able to point to Mike and say, when I was doing my files for 13 years, he ordered me, not one time did I get a finding, right? When I was physically doing files. But what I'm trying to get at is that when everything is set up right, and I know what you're talking about, that there's a financial burden that's going to come with outsourcing the recertification, but there's also something to be said about, we are lacking in other departments that maybe the talents that we do have in the staff and the things that we can endure and show up to do every day, maybe it is worth for us to have someone that can just do our files properly and let them do all those other things that we're missing and that we're lacking in anyway. We've been talking and we keep talking about, we know that, yes, we're short in maintenance and yes, I know that we're short in management, but this is something that is finding. And to your point, it keeps happening, keeps happening, right? So this is top of all of our plates, right? So like, how can we, how can we get to the point where we can solve this? And I would also, part of what I wanted to strip it to you guys is, you know, I know that you guys keep hearing that recertifications, people after COVID were not coming in for recertifications. If they don't come in for recertification, when he goes and he selects that file, and if it's a family who didn't come in for recertification, that file is going to be missing. So there were some of those that weren't even in there because that family didn't come in for recertification. So I'm glad to hear that the things that he found were not rent calculation things, those are the things that are really most important. But nonetheless, this is a problem that we have to fix. And if we can, if we can fix this by just having NPK and saying, okay, let's take care of that. The minute we give it to NPK, in your opinion, would that not almost automatically pass us next year?
Most likely.
Right? So it's like?
The 5058 commission, where Mr. C was talking about. In recent years, that form is all digital now and it's basically a self-calculated form. You put in demographics, the tenant's name, the number of dependents, your age, you put in the income. And the form basically calculates itself. There's not usually a lot of errors in the calculation anymore. The errors that you will find will be in the income or, you know, if someone gave somebody an extra dependency status to reach the revenue here for a developed head of senior or disability or something. That's where an error could happen on that form.
Right, so this is a two-part, two-part question based on just what you just said. How much of the deficiencies, the findings that we found were related to the rent calculations? And since you said the scope of the audit does not detect fraud, how do you determine that it was a simple error versus an intentional act?
Well, because the? Well, because the EID form is not there. Is that intentional, or did someone just not do it? It wasn't in the file, or something someone should have done? That's, is it, how can I say it's intentional? I don't know the person's motive why it's not.
Fair enough. I know the whole subject.
I'm sorry, I don't know the person's motive, why.
Why the form not being a fraud?
What I'm getting at is, even if the EID form is there, how could you tell through the audit that the information on that form is correct? Or is it that somebody's lying on?
I can, I can, you can tell the person's, okay, to break it down, right? You have the intake of the tenant that comes in, right? So the other person's name. They're supposed to provide you with their driver's license or social security card.
Driver's license, social security card.
Social security card, or 214.
I'm sorry, you gotta, you gotta give each other.
Sorry, it's a conversation.
I know, it is conversational, but you just gotta give each other a break.
So, so looking at that, the first part is, when they put in the person's name and they put in their birth date, you're going to know how old the person is, right? So if the person is 30 years old, they're obviously not a senior. So they shouldn't get credit for being a senior citizen, right? Then they have to list their dependents. Now, this is where sometimes the housing authority gets, if you will, or sometimes people, tenants who report them, they don't report all the people living in the apartment. There's no way that I would know that. That would be up to you when you do your rounds, you do your inspections, if you see people living in there, you can ask questions. Right? That would be one point, because if you're not reporting all the income that's in the apartment, right? So if there's, say, a single mom living in a place, and she has, she lists herself and she lists her kid, then what happens if her boyfriend's living there? You know, he comes to visit for the weekend, but he could be living there, and you would not know that. Nobody would know that, right? But his rent, his income then should be counted as part of the rent. So therefore, that would be fraud on the housing authority's part. Now, we typically don't find that. You typically find that because you might get a neighboring tenant to come in and say, you know, they might be making a lot of noise, and they say, well, this person's boyfriend is living here. He's here all the time. So then you call that person in, you have a conversation with them. If in fact, the person's living in there, you go back and back charging the rent. Hence again, we enter the payment reviews, but then you got big tenant AR. That's not something that's going to be found during the audit, because I would have no way of knowing who's living in that apartment. However, the people listed on that, they have to supply the certificates of any minor children.
So what is the internal control?
The internal control is, would be a checklist that the housing authority provides, and says, you do a recert, go down the list, and you must have every one of these documents in order to complete the recertification process. Then, the second part of that control is going to be that there is a supervisor that is going to sample your work to make sure that those things are done. You don't have to do 100%, but if you look at 20 of your files and you don't find any mistakes, there's a good chance if you're not going to find any, you can go with 20 and zero.
Sorry, I have more questions for you, but I just have to pivot quickly to the director. So Director, how are we implementing and following that internal control to verify income with our tenants?
So we get back to what we were talking about earlier about having established a quality assurance department. So they're doing sampling, if not 100% of all of the files now. So that will cover, and they're using self-site checklist that is used. So that will cover that question to make sure that that's happening.
Commissioner?
Yes.
In no way would I ever want anyone not to ask every question that they need to ask, but I hope you reconsider getting involved with committees again, because I think a lot, a lot of these questions could be answered in a lot of the committees. And again, I'm not trying to assign you, but I think we got two residents left in the room. Three residents left in the room, right? So it's just one of those things that you've got to kind of try to balance it. So this is my plea to you to get back involved in the committee process, because I think you'll get more out of it, and you'll have a lot more information than just coming to a meeting and trying to ask all the questions at a meeting.
Yeah, I would just say that I've been on the House Authority for over 10 years now. There is value in the committee process, and there's also value in being able to speak to the person who prepared the audit. And that's what I've chosen to do today. If anybody chooses to stick around and learn more about this valuable information, I know it's a little boring. Audits tend to be boring. Accounting tends to be boring. I have a degree in accounting. I don't use my degree in accounting. It's just that boring. But there are, there is a deficiency that exists, that has existed for 10 years without any kind of abatement, and so I'm trying to get to the bottom of that deficiency.
And I don't, I don't have a problem with that, Commissioner. All I'm saying is, if you were participating, we had, our audit was at our committee meeting, right? We asked them a number of questions at that meeting, and those are, those are opportunities, I think, for any commissioner who's participating to ask a lot of questions. And again, it could be reiterated at a meeting. I have no problem with that. But I think, I think the long, drawn-out back-and-forth questions becomes problematic for getting through a meeting, right? We've got a lot of business to do tonight, so.
Well, unfortunately, we disagree on that. The business, the way our housing authority, every housing authority is set up, is that the business of the authority is to conduct it at meetings, at these public meetings, on the record. The information that our auditor is kindly sharing with us needs to be on the record, and there is value.
I don't disagree. Yeah, I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure the record's clear. I don't, I don't disagree with that.
So I will, I'll do you a favor, and I will move on to my next question, my next subject.
Floor is yours, Commissioner.
How many more we have to add?
Good question.
How many?
So earlier, you had mentioned that there are various parts of the financial audit. One of those parts is procurement. What tests did you create for the procurement process?
So for procurement, it typically falls under the capital fund program, although it can pertain to the lower rent public housing program. Test of procurement, let me just get on the, just see what was. So the procurement would have only been applicable to the lower rent public housing program this year?
I'm sorry, the lower?
Lower rent public housing program. The capital fund program is not tested as a major program. We reviewed invoices, but not compliance. So we're required to, when we look at your grants that you receive, grants where you determine a major program, we have to, we have to cycle them in every year and we test the compliance on those grants. So the two programs that were tested for compliance this year were the lower rent public housing program and the housing choice voucher program.
Sorry, can you speak to that?
The housing choice voucher program.
Housing choice voucher.
But to answer your question, the typical test of procurement will include getting the listing of the checks, rate, the disbursements for that grant or that fund. Then we would select, based on materiality, invoices that we're going to look at. So the tests for the procurement are going to be, would you advertise in the newspaper? Did you get, if it rose to the level of procurement, like CO bids, did you get three CO bids? Was there a bid tabulation? Did the architect review that, and were they scored? And they have their insurance, did you pick the right people? Were they disbarred from doing business with the partner? That's another test.
So with respect to my colleague, Commissioner, I agree with you. What you just said about the housing choice voucher program is very interesting to me.
That doesn't, that would really pertain to the housing choice voucher program.
Well, even what you just said, I have a number of questions. And I don't want to ask those questions right now, just to save a little bit of long. But I will reach out to you. I will email you those questions. But to get back to procurement, so when, so when you tested the procurement, I'm trying to understand how, or what were any findings while you tested procurement?
So this year, the major acquisitions with fixed assets really came from the state of New Jersey, right? You received a forgivable grant from the state of New Jersey. And there were relatively little acquisitions, capital assets this year. So procurement was not an issue with you all this year. You really didn't buy any assets that would capitalize. There were no big additions to fixed assets. Most of that grant revenue was being forgiven this year. There was very little in terms of expenditure. The grant is almost done. I believe it was finished. There was $10,000 or $15,000 remaining. I think there's $90,000 left in the grant, which should be done this year.
Were there any expenditures, capital expenditures, related to emergency purchasing?
I would have to get back to you on that.
Okay.
In previous years, I believe there were some. Off the top of my head, I believe elevators was an emergency repair one year, I think, right? And emergency repairs, though, in order for them to bypass the bidding process, the board has to approve that. You have to designate it an emergency.
You're absolutely right. So how is the, so is that part of the test? That you would see during your audit, a bypass of the purchasing process?
For example, when they did the elevators, and it was, they were flooded, and they said they had to get the elevators fixed. It was a senior building. They had to get them up and down. And the bidding process was bypassed. We said, okay, we're saying it's emergency. Let me see the board resolution. If they don't have a board resolution, there's going to be a finding, because then it's not an emergency. You have to say it's an emergency.
Well, so you're saying that the only, based within the audit, the only way a crack a emergency is deemed an emergency if there is a board resolution to deem that?
That has to support it.
Correct.
That has to support it. It doesn't mean that it's not an emergency. It's going to be an issue if the board did not have a resolution, saying that it's an emergency.
Now, earlier, you had said that the scope of the audit does not include a mechanism to discover or uncover fraud. Is that correct?
No, it isn't.
No, it isn't.
No, it isn't.
Is there a way to, the housing board can increase the scope of its auditing to uncover fraud?
You can certainly request additional tests or bring concerns to specific areas, and we would do extended procedures in that area.
Can I bring those concerns directly to you?
You should bring those concerns to the, to the at the beginning of the audit.
At the beginning?
At the beginning of the audit. Your audit usually happens in April. Your year-end is September. Bill has informed December 15 to submit the financial statements. We have 60 days to approve, so that's February 15. By the time it's taxes, about the time we get all the workbreakers together, schedule level, we're in the middle of it. So you should come in right at the.
So, so just to clarify, when is the next audit, and when should I come to you directly with my concerns?
The next audit will be in April of next year. Your fiscal year is September, so September 24. That audit has to be completed by June 30, 2025. By OMB standard, or you get zero. You're scored zero. And you end up being financially troubled or troubled after the.
Is it common for individual commissioners to come to you rather than come through the executive director or through the entire board? The way that it's, that it's done, listen, very few housing authorities have audit committees, just so, just so you know. It would usually come through, if you have an audit committee of three people, it would be one of the people from the audit committee that would send an email and make a phone call and say, listen, the committee would like to meet with you. We could do that by in person, we could do that through Teams, we could do that through email, through whatever way, if it's that big of a concern, or something you're going to listen to.
And that's our finance committee. I mean, that's our finance committee. My concern is to have individual commissioners reaching out without anyone else on the board's knowledge and without my knowledge, and you having four different commissioners coming at you with different things.
Well, I would assume it would be, I would assume it would be a universal decision to reach out to us, because, yeah.
It's going to be a little awkward if, you know, Mr. Sanford calls me up, and then I call you, Mark, listen, I got a request from one of your commissioners, we wanted to extend the procedures because he has some uncertainties or concerns in this area. People are like, what are you talking about?
Right, and that's exactly what he was proposing. That is not, do not put words.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said you should contact him directly.
I was simply asking if I could talk to him directly.
Right.
There's no way he's.
We stick to the points so we can get through this guy.
We got the director interrupted. I'm almost done.
Yes, I am.
So is it unheard, is it unheard of for a commissioner to ask you a follow-up question?
No.
Commissioners ask questions during our audit presentations.
Then I will ask you follow-up questions. You can expect my email. Obviously, no one wants me to talk about this anymore.
That's not what we're saying at all.
You're, you're trying to relitigate things that have nothing to do with the audit, right?
Absolutely, that has anything to do with the audit.
You're talking about contacting one of our professionals. We went through this a thousand times, right? So you're trying, you're trying to inch around that conversation again. And, I mean, everybody knows what you're doing, so just stop. Like, he's here, he's a professional, we're paying him. Get the, get the value from our professional, right? Don't, don't waste.
That's exactly what I'm doing.
Don't waste his time or your own to try to relitigate things that we already discussed at a number.
This is, this has been a wonderful use of my time. I, I do not feel my time is a waste.
Okay, I appreciate it. Are you done with your questions?
I have done my questions for the time being, and I will send you some follow-up questions. Thank you for answering my questions.
Sorry, Commissioner, that's true.
Anyone have any further questions, Commissioner?
I think we voted already, and then there was a follow-up question, so what on to? Did we?
2024.
Hold on, hold on. Did we approve the audit?
No, we did not. We didn't vote on the audit yet.
I thought we.
No, we went back.
I believe you're thinking about the agency plan, which was Resolution 7.
It's a vote on you.
So there is a motion and a second.
Yes.
So we take the vote.
I can. David Edwards, yes. Anthony Forbes.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes. Jane Rodriguez.
Yes.
Michael Russo.
Aye.
Erica Seitzman.
Aye.
James Sanford.
No, this audit is incomplete.
I'm sorry, what's left?
No, this audit is incomplete.
And one last point on this, Director, Commissioner Stamp, there is a signature.
Sanford.
Sanford, my apologies. There was a signature page that I gave to you that was related to the audit. You said you were, I think what you said is you were going to give it to Sanford.
Yes.
Could I ask that you give it to him now? Because that's part of completing this audit process.
Is there a reason why you want me to do this one more?
So we can finish the audit.
Okay.
That's literally part of the audit, is getting that document.
Okay, well, in the interest of my colleagues who want to push this process along, I was going to talk to counsel after meeting regarding this document that I asked to sign before I signed.
Okay.
So I could give it to him now, and then I can talk to him about the questions. Or I was going to just hold on to it and then talk to him later. Whichever you prefer.
I'm just trying to ask the audit and figure out where this piece of paper is.
Has everyone else signed it?
Yeah.
Except for.
Thank you, Commissioner Forbes.
Commissioner Forbes.
But, Mike, correct, can I see it?
Yes.
Glad you didn't back up your mic, Mr. Is it?
I gotta hear you. I'm not hearing you.
Hi.
You're too tall.
I believe, I don't know, maybe our counsel is, I mean, my understanding is that this is needed to complete the audit, or can our auditor tell us? Is this form needed to complete the audit, our signatures?
Yeah, Commissioner, that is a requirement as part of the budget process. It's a group affidavit form for the audit. It is acknowledging that all of the, by signing it, all the commissioners are acknowledging that they received the audit. They afforded an opportunity to review it and ask any questions. That is all your.
And all I'm trying to understand, do we need this to finish the audit or don't we?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so I will head back to you, I guess, if you understand that you'll be speaking to counsel, and hopefully we can resolve that and finalize the audit.
And then H Q S return to me, the C E O.
Yes, correct.
Thank you. On vote? Next.
Resolution.
Resolution number one thousand proven annual budget.
Five.
Rule five.
Yes, five. Resolution six, there's a mistake, Director. It says twenty twenty-three, so we have to switch it.
All right.
Resolution number twenty twenty-four oh seven oh five. Resolution authorizing the approval of the annual budget for the fiscal year October first, twenty twenty-four, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns?
We did go through this in detail, I think, on the Friday's meeting.
Yes, we did.
So if everybody's comfortable, please call the vote.
You can. Dave Edwards.
Yes.
Anthony Forbes.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes.
Jean Rodriguez.
Yes.
Michael Russo.
Hi.
Erica Seitzman.
Yes.
James Sanford.
No.
Resolution number twenty twenty-four oh seven oh six. Resolution approving the operating rights for the housing authority of the city of Jersey City.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns? Call the vote.
David Edwards.
Yes.
Anthony Forbes.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes.
Yes.
Jean Rodriguez.
Yes.
Michael Russo.
Hi.
Erica Seitzman.
Yes.
James Sanford.
No.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
I wanted to officially thank him, but Michael, thank you, Bill, for being here.
Resolution number twenty twenty-four oh seven oh seven. Resolution of the housing authority of the city of Jersey City. To authorize an agreement with the housing authority of the city of Jersey City for a... I'm sorry. H Q S inspections of H C V P apartments, of H C V P apartments and an annual R A D O C A calculation for Pop Hill Gardens.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns?
What are we doing, J C?
They are doing inspections on our Housing Choice Voucher Program. We farm that out to them. And they are also doing a R A D, what's called an O C A. O C O A stands for?
Every year, Fox Hill, project-based vouchers can request an increase. And how they do it is the O C A, which is the annual amount that we can get for rent. So every year, the housing authority has to do an O C A calculation, which is going to determine how much we can increase the rent for that year. It's a number that's published by HUD for every area, for every housing authority. Then we do the calculation. Because Fox Hill is operated by a nonprofit housing authority, we need to have a third-party entity that is the person who does that. Now, so Bill Ketchum prepares it for us, has prepared it for us. Jersey City then reviews it. Moving forward, J C is going to prepare it for us as a third-party entity. That's what this agreement is. They did it last year. You guys approved it last year. And they are the ones who do our H Q S, like you said, for H C V and for Fox Hill. Not for public housing, only H C V and...
And if I could add one thing to that, Frank, to this test requirement?
Yes.
That is required. The housing authority cannot conduct its own H Q S inspections.
It's part of the program.
You have to have someone else do it.
A third party.
And historically, it has been Jersey City. And that's very common. Excuse me. Well, it's very common that you would essentially hire another housing authority to do it.
If I could. Matt Wright.
Did I spell you last name?
William Ketchum. K A T C H N.
I have to give mine for you.
HUD, I gotta say something. HUD. Under the Hartman Regulations, HUD said if you're converting to R A D or you're doing P B V, project-based voucher, specifically this applies to Fox Hill. You have the left hand writing the check. You have the right hand receiving the check. But it's the same entity because you don't have separate staffing. You need to comply with the independent entity regulations. The independent entity regulations require specifically a reasonableness, a Q S inspections, the annual O C A, operating cost adjustment factor, to be performed by an independent entity as well as they continue to expand it. So that's why we made a recommendation. Now, if the board so desires to approve that tonight, then tomorrow, Mark, you need to send to HUD... Kelly Peterson is your...
Yes.
Kelly Peterson, that you have named Jersey City Housing Authority as your independent entity. That's it.
Bill, good to see you again.
See you, Bill.
Oh, I got some questions for you. Thanks for speaking, Doc. Why are we using the Jersey City Housing Authority as opposed to, say, the current housing authority or West New York housing authority?
It was really our choice, not Bill's. It was my choice.
You've been here a long time.
No, it was my choice.
You might have some guidance as to why it's been historically the Jersey City.
I would presume staffing-wise. When you deal with an agency, you want someone who's got the staffing and the capabilities comparable. In the area, you are... From a locality standpoint, you're right behind Jersey City. So that would be the reason. Carney's small. West New York is not so small, but they still half the size of you. And candidly, the amount that they get paid for these services, they're losing money on it. It's more of a... It's more of like a service among...
That was going to be... That was going to be my exact next question. Page three, page two, compensation says seventy-five dollars per inspection. And then the motion is five hundred dollars upon completion. So for every... Could you help me to understand that that's five hundred and seventy-five dollars per inspection? No?
No.
So how much are we compensating Jersey City Housing Authority?
Seventy-five. The five hundred is a one-time fee to do our annual O C A. Our O C A only happens once a year and we pay them five hundred. The inspections is seventy-five thousand inspection and then there's two hundred apartments. So they're going to do two hundred inspections at Fox Hill.
So how do we... So the seventy-five dollars, how much net total is being compensated to the Jersey City Housing Authority?
Seventy-five.
Just seventy-five dollars?
Times two hundred. Seventy-five times two hundred. That's for Fox Hill. But they also do our Section eight, which we have about a hundred and fifty green vouchers on the street plus it's supported. So add about, potentially with some moving, they move out another two fifty a year on the Section eight. So altogether, let's round it up to about four fifty or five hundred inspections times seventy-five. That's the actual annual cost.
And so that is a Jersey City Housing Authority employee that's coming here?
That's their inspector.
How many inspectors?
Usually they send two or three at a time because we normally do the building that was shot and the Section eight is not in a few batches. So they have a few handful of inspectors.
And does the Jersey City Housing Authority, H Q S Board, Commissioner's Board, have to vote to authorize their inspectors?
They have to authorize this contract just like you guys have to authorize it. So first they sign it and they agree to it. And what you get before you is the one that's already kind of like represented to us. And then if we agree to it, then we'll all agree then and then just move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, Bill.
Thank you.
Any further questions, concerns? Please don't call the vote, Director.
David Edwards.
Yes.
Anthony Forbes.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes. Jean Rodriguez.
Yes.
Michael Russo.
Hi.
Erica Seitzman.
Yes.
James Sanford.
No.
I have no new business, but I think we're choosing it for this. So we agreed early on that we'd discuss the nature of illegal business during new business. And I have some questions for counsel and I have some questions for the director. So, Director, have you received any reports of complaints of illegal business at this housing authority?
I've heard some tonight.
Heard some tonight?
Yes.
And what about last month's meeting?
Well, I heard an argument last month's meeting. I'm not sure there was the term illegal business used.
Correct. And what steps have you taken to investigate it?
None at this point.
And could you elaborate as to why you're not?
We've had some other things to do. And we've had fights, possible, not possible shootings this month. So we've had an awfully lot on our plate and it hasn't been a large issue at this point.
So simple answer is no.
Yeah, yeah, I haven't done anything on that, on that issue.
And do you have any intention, based on what we've heard tonight, to investigate the matter further?
I'd have to wait.
I'm sorry, to investigate?
To investigate the matter further. Do you have any intention to investigate the matter further?
I'd have to wait and consider that and see what the issues are.
Correct. Can you help me to understand why you have to wait?
Because I want to know more about the issue.
What?
There's been some allegations, Mike.
So what? What would you... What further would you need in order to consider investigating further?
Well, I'm certainly always open and prefer somebody to put something in writing and give the grounds for their issue so we can take a look and see if there's any validity to that complaint.
See. So counsel, similar questions, similar... Are you aware of any illegal businesses operating on this housing authority? Other than the allegations or the discussion at the June meeting and at this meeting tonight, I am not aware of any... Term used as illegal business. Illegal business. Illegal business. Illegal business. Now, are you... You were here for a proportion, is that fair to say?
Correct.
You did hear... You did hear a member of the public bring to this board's attention an illegal business. An allegation of illegal business, yes. And you were also present at last month's meeting, at which point there was an argument that was not included in the minutes where an illegal business was also mentioned.
Correct.
Okay. So you've had two meetings, you mentioned an illegal business operating on this housing authority, federal property. What action may recommend the board take? If the board believes that there's some issue to investigate, the board would be free to take some action to investigate. So do you have to someone else to... You have no recommendations whatsoever? I don't know any of the facts, Commissioner. Just allegations that have been drawn around at the past... An alleged illegal business, would that potentially violate the law? Again, it's a hypothetical. I mean, it's a hypothetical. I'm not inclined to answer it, but I mean, if something is illegal, it violates the law by its very definition. If a tenant violated the law, what would be the response of this housing authority? I mean, I would... It would... Again, it's a hypothetical. There are different versions of a violation of the law. So you don't want to talk about hypothetical? No. And I don't want to talk about hypothetical. It would be very fact-sensitive and that would not be my decision to make. I can give advice, but I don't make decisions on behalf of the housing authority. Very clear. And let's not talk about hypothetical. Let's talk about two specifics. Two specifics. In December of twenty twenty-three, this board took action to censure this commissioner for an alleged violation of a policy, not a law. And two meetings ago, this board, by resolution, acted to remove this commissioner, recommending the removal of this commissioner. So the board does take action regarding supposed violations of, one, a policy in December and whatever, we don't know, from two meetings ago. So that is a very specific. What is your comment? What is your guidance? What was the legal opinion of this housing authority regarding those two actions by this board to try and remove a commissioner versus nothing that's going on right now?
What was... I'm sorry, Commissioner, what was the question or were you asking?
What was the question on it? Why did the board act on two matters of policy versus an allegation of the law being broken? I don't understand how that's a question for me, Commissioner.
Because you're a counselor.
Why? Why? Why this board took a vote to act in a certain way does not fall under my purview. I mean, you're asking me why a body of seven individuals took an action that they... How could I possibly answer that question? And again, it's not my... Your fault was it's not your purview. Then why did your law firm prepare a resolution? Because we were directed to by a commissioner.
You were directed...
Which commissioner? Please let me respond. Just if I could for a minute, Commissioner? Just like we have done on any number of occasions for you. And there was a reference tonight to the fact that we refused to prepare a resolution for you. I would like to put on the record that that request was made yesterday at four thirty P M for fourteen new resolutions to be put on the agenda for tonight's meeting. At four thirty P M, the day before this meeting, you made a totally unreasonable request for fourteen resolutions. And you were told, we do not have the capacity to fulfill that unreasonable request on your timeline. And that if you wanted to make motions on those resolutions, you were free to do so at this meeting just like you are at any other monthly regular meeting of the authority.
All right, I'm going to interrupt.
So nothing was refused. So the whole premise is ridiculous.
Again, you asked for a new business session so that we could discuss something specific. We are now back to relitigating something that happened months ago in reference to you. I don't think that's fair to not only the commissioners that are sitting here and the staff that's sitting here, but the public who has been sitting here waiting to potentially have this specific conversation about what you asked us to talk about. So if you want to keep it to that, I'm all for it. But if you're not, honestly, I don't think we should sit here and relitigate what happened months ago. And again, Commissioner, I'm trying to work with you here. I am giving you all the deference in the world. I respect the fact that you are a commissioner and you have the ability to ask those questions. But don't do things under a false pretense. If you wanted to talk about your stuff, you should have made that real clear. If you want to talk about something else, make it real clear. But you said one thing very specific. If you wanted to ask questions about the allegations that were made, and I think we need to stick to that. And that's it. I don't want you bringing it back to something else. I don't want to talk about what Reverend Forbes did two months ago or what I did a month ago. Keep it to where it is.
I don't want to talk about what we've done. I know.
I love talking about what I've done.
Okay. So this board... This board, we're talking now about this board. This board took action.
But that's not what we... That's not what this session has been about.
The chair is alleged to have created an illegal business and has been operating an illegal business on federal property, housing authority property. Are we going to have a discussion about that? Is the board going to?
She is not the only one doing it. She is not telling them anything.